I will call the meeting to order for Lincoln County Board of County Commissioners July 13, 2019. If you'd join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to introduce some special visitors we have today.
Sure.
Steve Ryan, who's a scoutmaster, has brought two scouts. Kitten Myers on the left and Matthew Myers on the right. Kitten just needs another one or two badges and he'll be an Eagle Scout. And one of them that they need is to attend a county meeting. This is their county meeting, so we're very pleased to have you guys.
Yes, thanks for coming. Okay, we have call to order, then Mr. Ellis for the courthouse maintenance, Mr. Philbrick from transportation bus, Mr. Whacker on a discussion on Union Drive. The highway department, Mr. O'Hare, 11 to 11:30, and the county attorney, 11:30 to noon over discussion for both in Lake Estates. And then at noon, we will begin to review the budgets that have been submitted thus far, and we'll see how long that takes. So we'll do correspondence first. I'm gonna wait on approving these minutes, we can do that afterwards because it's just a bunch of screening.
Also, while you were gone, Don. Don, I'm sorry, Don gave us some updates from Pub and from Cobb Alley and some other info, just for your info.
Okay. Did we also have that? Well, that was supposed to be today, we were gonna each suggest which companies we preferred out of the benefits management companies that we've heard from. So... We have some bills from Lincoln Park Manor, a sink strainer, and one and a half hours of labor. Go ahead, yeah. July 8th, serviceman used air compressor to blow out the line for drain on the east water cooler and he fixed the leak on a three compartment sink and checked for water leak in the booster in the kitchen, but couldn't find anything leaking. Hayworth Plumbing, a capacitor and a coil cleaner, and labor at $3, $70 an hour. Hayworth Plumbing. They re- we had a question on the Hayworth bill about the washer because it was four and a half hours labor, but he says he rebuilt a commercial toilet, which I'm still confused about that because they're all the same guts. And... It's from Street Plumbing. They installed the new, um... water softener, and then they had to come back and adjust the float switches. And they charged for an hour. And I asked if they were the same company that installed it, and she responded, yes, they installed it, and to have anything adjusted or changed costs extra, which I think should be questionable because we paid a lot of money to have that done and if they should have checked it, you'd think they'd come back and check it to make sure that it's running properly after the installation. This is for a doorknob from Lincoln Building Supply, $71.99. Glassman Corporation brochure.
Um, they stopped by and they would like to bid our maintenance on our boiler system, but they also, they do a lot of commercial stuff, so if you left that,
Okay.
I would leave that for you guys. They also do HVAC, big commercial chillers, plumbing. All kinds of things.
Okay. And 2019 agricultural land inventory questionnaire. So this would be for what we own and we're currently renting.
Up to the landfill there.
It looks like in the corner, also, is that 14?
Maybe it's only, that's north of the car around engine.
That's what it looks like to me.
North of Meyer Station.
Like between 14 and, at the corner of 14 and 18, on the backside of the development there. And resolution 2011. This is the resolution that Mr. Gableman was referring to when he said that his business, is called to handle any bodies that may be found that are not claimed by family, correct?
Without a family and without means of paying for.
Indigent is the word, right. So be it resolved that number one, body to be buried in one of the cemetery blocks owned by Lincoln County, Kansas, located in the city of Lincoln Center Cemetery. And number two, the county will provide funds not to exceed $1,000 per burial to cover the following anticipated expenses. Burial permit, opening and closing the grave, casket setup, delivery of the casket, graveside service, and compensation administered and other miscellaneous expenses. So that was signed in the year 2000, February 28th. I really don't see a need to amend anything on there. What you're saying is that you've always received those calls, but the resolution is actually just pertaining to the cost that the county is allotting. Okay. I don't see an issue there. Do you, I think I have, do you want a copy? I have three copies here, thank you, Don. And resolution... 96 C2.
Let's see.
Yeah, I got them all coming.
Well, this one, this one, that's for all of them. That's part of that. We gotta sign that.
Oh, okay. We had asked to see the mill levy and how that was created for economic development. So it looks like 1996 and 1998. Are there three copies here, or is that?
No, there was supposed to be three copies.
There are only three copies of the second one, so it's 96 and 98.
98 might have been actually mine for the hospital.
Oh, let's see.
I never got you guys history.
Charter resolution exempting Lincoln County Kansas Board of Commissioners from provisions of KSA 795028 to provide funds for Lincoln County's economic development.
The other one is just, sorry if it wasn't to be given to you. It's, I think, hospital melody. I was gonna do the history, I just haven't got it all done yet. Or maybe just services for the age.
Yeah, this is the hospital, you're right. Okay, the following is hereby added to provisions of KSA 1995, supplement 795028, and amendments thereto. Expenses incurred for the operation of Lincoln County Hospital up to four mills in any given year under KSA 194606 to be effective until said charter ordinance is rescinded by this board or its successors. This charter resolution shall be published one each week for three consecutive weeks in the official county newspaper in compliance with 19101B and C. This charter resolution shall be submitted to a referendum of the people in accordance with 19101BC and shall become effective from and after certification of its passage by a majority of the electorate voting at the primary election to be held on August 6, 1996, upon canvassing by the Board of County Commissioners on August 9, 1996. But this is just the original four.
Yeah.
So we still need to look at the additional ones because there would be an additional up to six, right? So that's, so it'd be after 1996.
Economic development, I found that.
Yes, thank you.
I just didn't need to include it with your stuff.
That's okay. And so... Resolution 98 C3.
For economic development, creation.
Purpose of the proposition affecting or voting for the proposition effect of voting against the proposition.
That got voted in 98.
Yeah, this resolution asks for support of Lincoln County Economic Development Office with an annual levy of up to two mills from outside the tax lid, starting in the year 2000. Shall the Board of County Commissioners of Lincoln County be authorized to levy a tax of two mills in any given year upon all taxable property in the county pursuant to Kansas law to help support a Lincoln County Office of Economic Development led by an Economic Development Director? And this charter resolution shall be put to a vote of the people in compliance with KSA 19101B and C. The Board shall canvass the results of the vote on November 6, 1998. The effect of a yes vote would be to give the Board of Commissioners legal permission to levy a tax of two mills each year from outside the tax lid for stable core funding for a countywide economic development office, including a trained professional who would live in Lincoln County and be the local economic development director, starting in 2000.
What was your question?
Whether it was up to two mills or two mills and full. And that's interesting because it says both. It looks like the question on the ballot was, shall the board be authorized to levy a tax of two mills?
Have we been given two mills ever since, Don?
Yes.
So the policy is going to do that, I guess. So that must be the assumption to... So if we gave them less, that would be... Would that be correct or not to, do we have the option? Do you know, Don, or?
I don't, I think it's two mills.
We have to give them two mills because that's what they voted for.
I don't know, we can ask the county attorney today. Because in the, in the description of the resolution, it says, "This resolution asks for support of Lincoln County Economic Development Office with an annual levy of up to two mills." But the question that was put on the ballot looks to be, be authorized to levy a tax of two mills in any given year, which doesn't mean you have to levy it. It just says that you can, which doesn't mean you have to.
Well, we do that with everything, right? With all of ours.
No, certain things.
Certain things have to get there, certainly else.
Right, right. So basically, the public vote was, do we have permission to do this in any particular year? And the answer was yes, but it doesn't mean that we are obligated to. So we don't have to.
We could give one and a half if we want.
Or we could not levy that tax at all.
I don't think you can, you have to levy two mills, but you don't have to do it every year. It depends on what the ballot actually said. And if the ballot actually says this, it says... The question says, a levy of two mills, it's not if, as, and when.
No, it says, "Shall the board be authorized to tax a levy of two mills in any given year?" It doesn't say shall, it doesn't say that we are obligated. We can ask her when she's there.
Yeah, but we need a clarification.
There's no obligation there.
They changed the wording from up to to exactly two mills, which means the, I think the year is the optional part and not the two mills.
Well, that means it doesn't have to exist at all.
Well, the intention may have been to probably give it two mills because the commissioners have been for the last 20 years doing that. But that doesn't, you know, you may have a good point, what is the real law then?
I just want the clarification on what we are obligated to do and what we have the choice to do.
Yeah, right, I do.
And just, for example, the hospital.
Hospital, yeah.
You know, it was first four mills and then it was up to an additional six. So we have given the full 10 mills, but that dollar amount has increased by over $150,000 just a few years ago, right?
Alright.
So, and then if we could move on to the minutes. We had two meetings last week. July 8th and July 11th.
I move to approve the July 8th minutes as published.
As presented.
I'll second.
Is there any further discussion? I just wanted to make sure... Oh, they're, okay, I was confusing a recess with an executive session, we're good. I just want to make sure it said no action taken.
It's okay, I forgot to read the meeting accord. I saw maybe you had.
With no action ta- I just wanted to make sure that's in there and, okay. If there's no further discussion, those in favor vote aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. You said July 8th, correct?
Yes.
So then we have the 11th was a special meeting, and what we did was review the evaluations that have been done for the departments. We had quite a few executive sessions to get that finished. We also had a brief executive session regarding new information that we'd been given on the contracts or lack thereof with medical consultants for our two departments, the health department and the EMS department. We did sign a new contract for the health department, but we still don't have one in place going from here into the future with the EMS department.
I'll make a motion to approve the July 11th special meeting minutes.
I'll second that.
I guess, I just want a clarification. It says, Commissioner Gableman addressed the board regarding how the board should to address employees, supervisors, and constituents. Don, you might wanna patch that up, but I'm not sure what that means.
I was trying to summarize what he said, but I really don't know what he said.
Let's just omit that, I think if someone's interested in the...
Strike those three?
That's my suggestion.
That's a motion to amend, and I second that.
Okay, so I move to amend the minutes to strike the board member line. And it's been seconded by Mr. Gableman. Those in favor for the amendment, vote aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Those in favor for the motion to approve the minutes for July 11th, 2019, vote aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And then we have one more piece of correspondence. It looks like on the 16th, 17th, and 18th, which would have been Wednesday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, Mr. Doe has put in for hours of leave time, which he did not fill out for the... Let's see. He put these in on Monday for Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. It just says appointment, 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 but he didn't put a total on here, so this would be eight.
I have a question on, on this type of thing. Should we almost go into executive session since it's employee, uh...
No, any.
Employee issue?
No, time cards are public record.
So all this recommend, recommend, or all this, uh... Requesting that and all that is too, then? Okay. I didn't know if we'd need to put it in front of a meeting like this, but whatever.
Yeah, we do because we are the supervisor, so time cards are public record. If anyone wanted to come in and see time cards, they could.
Alright.
As long as there was nothing written on there that had some kind of medical information or social security number or something like that, which at that point, it would be up to the, um, what are you called, the public, or the...
County card.
No.
Public information officer.
Public information officer would have to redact the information.
You got a lot of hats, you have a lot of hats, Don, though.
So...
I need a sign.
H R, county card.
This is what I am now.
What do you get paid for that extra, for anything?
Nothing.
Oh, okay. So what do you think?
Uh, it looks like this last day, he has eight and a half hours. And so it was four, five, six... 16 hours of leave time. Are we... It's not pre-approved, so we're post approving it. So any objections to approving the 16 hours leave time last week?
No, not at all.
I can't believe you do a lot of post approval.
Well, that, that is what we were getting to, remember? He, basically, when we visited with Mr. Doe last week, we were asking him why he was putting in for leave time the same day he was leaving. So he did this on Monday for three days in the same week, and we were talking about how we only meet on Mondays. But in the handbook, the only thing that the leave time policy addresses is vacation time, which is supposed to be submitted 30 days in advance. So if we're doing leave time such as an appointment here, four hours, half a day there, whole day, anywhere, we, we have to cre-
Need the pictures of the handbook.
Right, we have to create that policy because he indicated that until we create that policy, he'll continue to do it this way. So I'll approve it because that is what the discussion was. What is today, the 15th?
Well, one of the confusing things on all this leave is we have a combination of vacation and then medical leave and then just take off to leave to go to the, whatever.
Well, that's why I would-
In other words, it's not defined very well, in my opinion.
There is no definitive thing in the handbook because basically, I would suggest that when we edit it, we say PTO, which is paid time off.
Yeah.
So whether you're sick or whether you want to leave for half a day because you have an appointment or something to get your car fixed, if you, if we designate it in the handbook as paid time off, you accrue 12 hours a month and you can use it however you wish.
Yeah.
We need some advance notice in case we have to adjust the business of the office for an absence.
Exactly.
Well, if they got a week for a week for vacation, then you should.
But even if you're going for an afternoon, if Don was going for an afternoon, we probably ought to know about that.
Well, and even if this person is gone for an afternoon, if there was a call that came in, I mean, I'm assuming the cell phone goes with the person, but in any particular circumstance where we may meet that person, at least the office should know.
We just, that's just handbook fix.
So, yeah, we need to address the handbook, but that's gonna be after we do the budget, if that's okay with everyone else. Okay, any further business to come before the board, before we move on?
Nope, nothing.
Okay, Mr. Ellis, next.
Okay, I have two issues. One, we, I've addressed before, and Randy asked me about it. It was about those stone posts that are out there, it says lean count.
Well, right there, I wanted, if you haven't noticed.
And so, and I know I'm not addressing the steps or anything, but in this whole discussion, that may get all tore out, and that's why we just decided to leave it. So if we're just gonna leave it, my opinion is, because the week after we said not to do anything, some guy stood out there, you know, some official, right next to the sign, and it was in the paper. So I thought, why not just, I'll get the county boys to come and just pull them out of there for now, and, you know, because, you know, it doesn't pay to try to fix them and just pull them out now and because if next year, if everything works out right, and this does get all tore out, you know, the next year, they're gonna be out of there anyway. So if it's alright with you, then just have those pulled out of there.
You're talking about those two stone posts with say Lincoln, Kansas.
Yes.
And the one, for half, some of you don't know, half the Lincoln one has chipped, fell away, so it's just like.
I've painted them twice since I've been here, but now it's get to the point that it really doesn't, you know, try to paint it.
So you just want to pull them out, leave nothing there, then?
Just leave nothing there. I mean, it says, says Lincoln County on the, you know, Lincoln County Courthouse on the, you know, courthouse. So it, you know, it's not like, and then next year, we'll address it when they're... When this all gets tore out, you're gonna talk about landscaping and everything if it does, you know, happen, so.
Yeah, do you have a place to store them?
Well, you can haul them out there to the county property out there, so. Because those two won't be able to be used anyway. It'll just be having those four come back to be lean posts, so. So out to the gas pumps, that's all Lincoln, that's all county property.
Right now, we have the standing post and the lean post for each one, Lincoln, Kansas.
Right, so just-
You're gonna take all of them out.
Just haul, take them all out, so. If that's alright with you guys. For aesthetics, you know, people take pictures and...
Well, yeah, they look good, but that Lincoln one that's there, well, it doesn't look good. Yeah, I know.
Yeah, if that's okay with you, then I'll just-
I mean, it's going to be some time before they do anything with the steps. I do know that because we're just in the assessment process.
Right, but if they get the grant, it could be next summer as we start, so it's not that far away, so. I mean, it was just beginning of this year, we're already in the July, so. I mean, so why have, leave them there so, you know, people take pictures and, I mean, that's my opinion, but, I mean.
You'd like to say, take them out.
Take them out, that's, okay. Now, the second thing is, this you have to decide on, is the painting of the building. And I have a recommendation on that. Recommendation is, um, it doesn't, other than the cost of publishing in the paper, that we put, uh, out in the paper bids for the front of the building and then for the other three sides. And I split it that way because if they can do it this year and the cost is, you know, not gonna be that bad, we could get the front done because once they start outside, they won't be able to do the front. And you could pay for it this year at the front and then budget in the other three sides next year.
The painting is part of the...
Right, but then, we're gonna be waiting a long time and, you know, stuff falls off, people take pictures. Again, I'm thinking aesthetics and all of that. And if you don't want to pay for the other three sides, at least get the front painted. There's not gonna be, those guys are gonna look at it and say, it's gonna need painted. I mean, anybody that looks at it, you know, it needs to be painted.
No, what I'm saying is, the project that we're doing through the Historical Society for the renovation of the exterior, well, the steps specifically and the painting, that's all part of one package. All the painting for the entire trim everywhere.
That grant we get for $90,000, I don't think's gonna even cover that. It'd be lucky if it covered the front steps and the whole...
What, $90,000?
There's a grant that we can apply for in November for $90,000 to, for due to the work.
Yeah, I mean, it's a match funds, so I don't know what the dollar amount we're going to get, but we do have to match a certain amount, and yes, that may be the same cost.
But I'm just saying, we're just, we keep rolling it over, and that's something we could...
I mean, I'm more worried about the physical deterioration than I am the aesthetics of it.
Well, that's what I am, because every time, yeah, a storm is, there's, there's molding and stuff that, caulking that falls down, so you know, it's deteriorating. And the frames of the windows, you know, are bare, and we're talking about, you know, it's taking off the storm windows, we're talking about repainting it, you know, and probably recaulking windows and recaulking up above and repainting all of that. And then we better make sure that they clean the windows off before they put the storm windows back on because that didn't get done when they replaced the screens. And so now our windows are all dirty inside, and it doesn't cost anything, you know, outside of the newspaper run to, you know, and people to bring in bids in. And you can decide whether you want to do stuff, some or not.
Well, that's what she's thinking of, is that we have this, we have that part, it's part of the package.
Part of the package.
Suspending would be part of the package, and if you want to do it now, we'd have to spend for that outside of this package.
Well, all the package is, is the assess the building. Those guys are coming to come, that, what we're talking about is assessing the building. They're, that, that package is talking about assessing the front and back.
We have already approved to pay, I think it was 80/20, so I think we're paying 20% of the assessment cost at this point. After the assessment is completed, then they can take those blueprints, if you will, and bid them out to the people who would be doing the actual work, and that has to be approved through the Historical Society in order to qualify for the grant.
Right.
So what we're saying is if we take out that portion of the work, we're actually reducing the dollar amount that we're eligible for as far as getting 80% of it paid. I think it's 80, 70 or 80, I can't remember.
Yeah, right. If we painted it now, then when they give us a grant, they say, well, you already painted that, so we ain't gonna put that as part of the grant till we lose out on the money.
Plus, the other part of that is, if there are boards that need to be replaced, that's part of that maintenance issue that's going to be included. So if the assessment will say, replace six boards on the south side, replace five boards and trim on the north side. I mean, that's part of the assessment issue. And I don't disagree with you, we probably should have done that a few years back. So I'm not, I'm not saying you're wrong, I'm just saying.
What you're saying is it's right.
I don't want to deteriorate our funds.
So I just wanted the front because...
We, well, we want to fix it too, paint it too, but we're going in this process of using this.
Right, yeah, that's what I was saying last time.
And we're gonna try to get everything.
I got a new, two new, two new commissioners now that I can come to and, and see if I could, you know, do something else, so.
Well, because, well, we're waiting on this grant because that's gonna be a big overhaul. It's gonna combine a lot of stuff, okay? And if we go outside of that, then they may not fund that.
If we weren't doing the grant and, and we could get that fit into our budget, of course, I would say that's...
That esterma grant, I think they're applying for it, and I, when I talked to Kelly, it was only for $90,000, and that's a match type 80/20, so that's $90,000. And I think it's gonna cost over $100,000 just to probably do that, just to tear out the front and redo it, if that's what, well, you don't know if it's gonna happen or not, but if they have to tear that out and redo sidewalks all the way down, redo the steps, that's, and then redo all the stonework, all the way from, you know, redo it all brand new, that's gonna be more than, that'll pretty much cover your whole grant just to do the front, if, if any, even, even the back steps.
That's why you do the phases.
Yeah, and the point is, the total amount that we are requesting is including the work that you're talking about. So that ups the total request amount. And regardless if there's a cap on that, we may be depleting the amount that they're approving for their portion as 80% of X. Do you see what I'm saying? I don't know what that X number is.
We should-
We don't want to reduce that by, we just don't want to reduce that at this point. Until we get the assessment in and see what they say.
Okay.
Yeah, well, maybe on the second, maybe we should review this again with Kelly to find out.
Well, the assessment is supposed to include an estimate number because- Well, the assessment is supposed to include, um, an estimate number because that's how we, we were, we did an assessment, or we did an estimate on the assessment, what we thought it was gonna cost. Now that assessment will give us an estimate on the project and then we bid it out, and hopefully the lower bid is lower than I mean, you don't have to take the lowest bid, but hopefully the bids are lower or equal to what the assessment projection is going to be. And the assessment is already to include the work that you're talking about. So basically, now we've paid for an assessment that is going to analyze exactly what you're saying. We've already paid for it.
Okay.
But I understand.
No, your tensions are good here, it's just that I think we gotta go through what this.
Well, and I think he's frustrated because I'm sure two years ago, I know we talked about this.
Six, seven, eight years is all, the steps could have, the steps could have probably been repaired back when Pete was doing it, now then they may have to be, you know, stripped and ripped out.
I know. Well, they are, I mean, and part of that is also the material that was used.
And, you know, just every year, every, every year, it puts strain on to create more work.
I know.
Got more work to be done on the windows or more work here or more work there.
Are you able to, um, coordinate someone with you physically to do the stone posts or?
Well, I'll go talk to the county boys over there.
That, are you referring to the highway department? I'm a little concerned about that because I'm always being told that they're so preoccupied and busy and have no time or availability, so that's kind of a little bit of a concern.
Oh, I'll get, I'll get it done.
So it depends on who you are. Okay, thank you.
And I have other people that'll be too soon.
Yeah, that'd be great. If someone is physically able and available, that is not preoccupied with other tasks, it'd be great.
Okay, that's all I got. Alright, thank you.
Um, we don't have Mr. Philbrook here. Is he upstairs? Do you, okay, could you ask him to come in? Thank you. Hello.
The information on the left side of the booklet and the leaf is the beginning information. Email confirmation on the reimbursement availability. On Garrett.
Yes, I don't know if you've had any correspondence with anyone since we looked at that, the, the pre-employment screening, we had decided that until someone is an employee, we were not going to reimburse any expenses that they incurred as far as mileage. Once they're an employee, which it looks like this says, um. Is, um, is the required yearly driver physical eligible for reimbursement, which would be yes, but that would be as an employee.
Right, but this also, even clarify, excuse me, clarify this further by saying if the person was hired, the reimbursement is okay.
Right, and the commission had never hired anyone. You nor the board brought forth a name for eligibility for hire or anything like that. We were unaware of that.
I wasn't involved in hiring of the person. The rest board did.
Yeah, the board had never come to us, so therefore, we, the, when we, um, approved our accounts payable.
Year-end results.
We're just saying, Jerry, on that is that we have to prove with the, the, uh, the amount we're paying him, that's all, you know, the wages.
I understand that, but it's customary and.
Yeah, and we know.
Right there and the state gave us permission to do it.
Yeah, and we're not against that, just so we.
It costs the county twenty bucks. You realize that?
Of what, for mileage?
It's not about the cost, it's about the precedent.
Well, yeah, when he, when he, he wasn't employed yet, so we can't pay him out.
Possibly pay any citizen mileage for going and doing a pre-physical to be eligible to be employed, that's.
And then, and the only issue we had with Anne Marie coming here was, we're not against hiring him, and you guys even picking hiring him. It's just that we wanna be informed because we have to set his wage value, how much we're gonna pay for an hour, that's what we have to do here. That's all we wanted to coordinate with her and you. That's the whole issue here. There's no problem otherwise.
I wasn't even in the loop.
Well, we're not, well, we're, and we're not blaming you for nothing here.
All I'm trying to do is state specifics and.
Yeah, we know, we're not blaming you for nothing here, we just, we just wanna coordinate with her and the board if we hire somebody in the future, and I know this hasn't happened before.
The clarification needs to be that if the board is conducting interviews and chooses the interviewee, they're truly not hired, could you give me a little bit of eye contact, please? They're truly not hired until the board approves it. So really, if they're just in the process of verifying their eligibility, they're not truly hired, because we actually set the wage. You can put the request forth, but I think we're paying it out of our funds, which is why you're actually considered a county employee. Though your budget is subsidized through the state program, you're still a county employee.
Anyway, what else do you have?
I'm finished. Four is yours.
Well, I think there was a question about, um, clocking in and out from home for you.
Excuse me?
I think we had a question if you were able to clock in and out from your home. That was brought forth to the board as a question, well, I guess maybe it wasn't in the meeting, but I was asked, um, about getting an app on your phone. There were a couple people who wondered, and I think, was that one of your questions?
Uh, not particularly. It's kind of a, I had an instance here just last week where I actually, uh, clocked out, thought I was done with the patron. And if she changed her mind, decides she wanted to ride home, well, I've been home for lunch for twenty minutes. She called and wanted to ride home, so I run back up here and clock back in, got the vehicle, went to get her and and clocked back out again. I think the reference was made, if I recall correctly. It was, uh, being in Salina during a typical lunch situation. Uh, which really doesn't affect me, cause I don't take lunch. So I can either, uh, I have, I feel that I have the luxury of either, if the run started at, say, ten o'clock in the morning, didn't get home till three o'clock in the afternoon, I'd have a choice of either clocking out for an hour to take lunch at that time, or in the past, when I ran into that, I even clocked out for the day at four. So I've had my eight hours in, but the problem being there is the, the, uh, phone needs to be covered from four to five cause that's our hours. Well, I'd go ahead and take care of the phone, that's no big deal, it doesn't bother me.
I think the proper procedure with the time clock is filling out one of those slips, because if you're not here to physically punch your lunch, because we have to have a half hour lunch for an eight hour work day. So you would have to fill out a slip that just says, I was in Salina for my half an hour lunch, and then it gets approved. If you're not physically at the time clock. Did you get to read the time clock policy that we just set?
No.
I believe that's the assumption, that anyone who's not physically on site to be able to clock in or out just fills out the exemption slip, so it's not every day. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I didn't remember that part of it. I wasn't the one that brought it up, I don't know who did, so.
Well, I think there was a question and it, it comes to the board because we're setting forth, I know the time clock is new for everyone and it's gonna take a while to get adjusted. But the procedure would be, you leave for the day, if you're out over your lunch, you don't clock in or out for lunch, you just fill out your slip for lunch, and then when you come back at the end of the day, you clock out. Does that make sense?
And we know you got a special situation, cause you're all over the place, driving and depending on all kinds of hours. So you're not the normal employee who would work, you know, it. Well, you don't have the normal hours, is what I mean, because you could be driving to Salina during lunch, or back from lunch, you know. So you got a variable, and so, like Alexis just said, we have these slips, we can just say deviation from normal, saying I didn't take lunch or I was on the road during lunch, that's all we want. It's just trying to help us all operate, especially the HR and payroll people to process our time clocks easier. It helps everyone that way.
And I do believe, I, I think his slips should come to the board since the bus board only meets once a month.
Yeah, that's fine, yeah, just.
If you turn your slips to the dawn, she'll give them to us.
If you have a deviation from your regular time. And we, we don't have a problem with you doing that, it's just trying to get, keep everything organized and know what's going on. And, because every department's different, highway department's different than you, the people that live up, work upstairs, the offices are different than, you know, so, but just try to get more organized, especially for payroll, so they, helps them out, because when we had the old time card system, it was a hassle for payroll, and this hopefully helps Dawn and HR people, okay? I know a lot of people wonder why we're doing this time clock stuff, well, that's the reason, really.
So you're saying I can't do an eight to four?
Correct, that's right. We applied to the state that your grant would be eight to five with the lunch, so.
But technically, I'm still running.
I guess, wouldn't it be eight? But if you're leaving at four o'clock, you're not gonna.
This, that takes my job. This runs nine hours a day. On the dispatcher, on the whole, you know, the whole thing. So I consider as long as this is going for nine hours a day, I should be covered. I'm actually doing nine hours a day.
Is that why you were saying an hour lunch? I'm not, did we set hours for the bus?
Yes, you did.
Eight to five, cause that's what their grant says.
That's right, we, yeah.
But I'm sorry, it has a voicemail, Jerry, you can let the voicemail pick it up during your lunch. And then return the call.
I thought they had to give twenty-four hours notice anyhow.
I'm sorry?
I, I was under the impression that the bus board policy was that you give twenty-four hours notice for a ride, so there is no reason that you would have to get.
Absolutely necessary, it says we would like to have twenty-four hours.
Right, well, I think twenty minutes notice is a little, is crunching it.
Fire.
Well, some people may have emergency though, Alexis, like they may be, uh, you know, all of a sudden find out they got an appointment change for something in Salina, and they got, you know, so there should be exceptions, you know.
Well, the other side.
Well, still, the time clock policy is you punch in at your start time and you punch out at your end time. If your lunch is at one or three, I don't think that really matters to us. I mean, you can take your lunch when it's convenient for you. And if you're doing it on the road, you just fill out the slip. If you're here, then you use the time clock.
Right.
That's just the policy, and that makes it, that's, makes it fair for everyone.
I unders, I understand you got questions on the, uh, grant? Or the money or whatever.
Well, we had approved an additional two thousand dollars because I think the numbers were off for the current year that we're in, correct? And we had to give our portion of the funds.
Commitment.
But that wasn't for next year, that was for the year that we're in, correct? We were gonna be short.
New year now, within the state's twenty twenty budget.
I think he amended that budget to reduce it to the twenty thousand.
I reduced my budget request of the state to get under the, the county's commitment of twenty five.
Okay, okay. Oh, that was the question, whether we could do that or whether we had to offer the additional funds to the batch, right?
Plenty part of it is, the guy that was running the deal approved my original number, which was seventy-two thousand dollars. But then we reduced it to sixty-six, six fifty, to get under the twenty thousand. And I guess it's a good thing we did that because just reasonable, what it is. The middle of May, I gotta revise, dumping it down to the sixty-six, so we're okay. But I have a question in that regard, uh. What does a a regular county employee cost to county?
Well, it varies.
You mean benefits? You mean benefits like medical insurance?
Included.
Well, it depends on their hourly rate at full time.
Lowest one you can think of? Twelve bucks an hour.
Somewhere in there, eleven eighty, I think, might be one of the enter, en, entrance wages, so. I can do it at twelve. And, and are you saying like with an insurance package?
The whole nine yards. Benefits, everything.
Well, if they're part-time, obviously it's different than full-time.
Full-time.
I don't know.
I don't know what the individual package is. I know that the highest package is about twenty-two thousand for the year, but, um.
For benefits?
Mm-hmm. I don't know what the individual lower one is.
Probably ten to twelve, huh?
So let's put.
Dawn, do you have any guess on that?
On what, sorry?
The lowest benefits package for an individual, not the lowest, but just what the lower, yeah, single plan.
Full-time employee.
Middle of the line, single plan or something.
Part-time.
Is it ten thousand?
I have too many numbers, I might have to keep that one.
Let's, yeah, I'm sure.
Can we get back to you on that?
Why don't we just round it off to about forty thousand?
Thirty-five thousand if you're doing twelve dollars an hour plus a ten thousand dollar benefits package.
Thirty-five thousand. And, uh, running the bus. There's several years worth of analysis there. Twelve years.
Nine thousand eighty-one for a sample.
Okay, so I put in ten, so that's close.
Okay.
Thirty, we'll go with thirty-five thousand, that's about a ten thousand dollar a year insurance policy.
Okay, the example I'm trying to, to get at is, as you can see by this spreadsheet here. The highest number was from, in, uh, July thirteen to June fourteen was nineteen thousand eight hundred and thirty-eight bucks.
For?
To run the transportation department, the whole deal, all the expenses.
How can that be possible when our portion was sixteen thousand and we have a matching state grant that's greater than that? How's that possible?
Excuse me?
You're saying that, you're, I'm not sure, I'm not sure what this means.
Okay, to run the whole, the whole thing, all personnel, all the vehicles, all the expenses for the whole thing. It costs the county thirty percent of that total number. That's what this number is.
Well, we're paying a lot more than thirty percent of twenty thousand dollars, we're paying the twenty thousand dollars. This, these numbers can't be right. Let's go with just this year, July two thousand eighteen through June two thousand nineteen. You have operating expense of nineteen thousand two hundred and one, administrative fee, what is that? Admin, just says admin, twenty-three dollars.
Administration.
Twenty-three dollars?
Equipment, whatever.
So extra purch, purchases, like office purchases?
Yeah.
Okay.
Stuff like that.
So you have a total of nineteen thousand two hundred and twenty-four. Well, our, our portion. is twenty thousand dollars, so that's over a hundred percent.
No, that's your commitment, that is the county's commitment. That means, in the past, I've always been told that the county will commit just like the column says, by the year, is what it's already been.
When we approve our budget, it's our, our, our approved budget was twenty thousand dollars.
Yeah, that's what we throw at it, and I've been told any, if we go over that figure, we'll just shut it down. Well, you, is that really what you mean to do?
No, because these numbers are not accurate at all, you haven't included what the state portion is for the funding. That's our twenty thousand dollars that we give out of county general, I believe it is, or do we have a separate? No, it's just county general.
Okay.
So we give you twenty thousand dollars for your budget, or the bus board, I should say, twenty thousand dollars for their budget. You don't have the numbers in here for the matching funds that you get from the state, because this is your total operating.
All right here. This is for the last year.
Am I, am I looking in here?
It was this.
Oh, in this, in this deal?
Yeah.
That's the bottom right-hand column.
Forty-four thousand eight hundred and two dollars. Is what I see.
Yeah, that was the county's total number. Above that was the federal portion that was paid. Above that was the state portion that was paid. And the top line of nineteen two oh one sixteen was what it cost the county.
Okay, so when you say what the, what the bus department, what the bus board spends an entire year is forty-four thousand eight hundred two dollars and seventy-seven cents, of which the county paid nineteen thousand two hundred and one dollars and sixteen cents?
Yeah. That figure is the next column up, it was sixty-four thousand deficit, sixty-four thousand dollars what it took to run it.
Yeah, but you're getting sixty-four accounting, state and federal and local, right?
Some, something's wrong with this spreadsheet, because those numbers do not add up. I'll tell you what, in the interest of time, we have another appointment. Would you be willing to come and discuss this with us again as we move through the budget portion of the year? And I'd like to move on because we have someone waiting and we still have some appointments to do. But I do think we need to address that because those numbers don't make sense to me. And we will be setting our budget line item out of the general fund here soon that we are dedicating to the bus board. For your operation.
The only point I was trying to make, which I didn't get to, was such a twenty thousand dollars if by some chance the expenses would run or exceed.
Twenty thousand.
The twenty thousand. I see. I gotta explain this one bit. Okay, going back to this last year's where they actually gave us approved a budget of seventy-three thousand one hundred and sixty-six dollars. When you go over that number, if we just spent seventy-five thousand running it. Okay, anything over the seventy-three thousand, we would, we would lose the thirty percent, uh, no.
Are you saying that this?
The difference between what's left in the budgetary amount number that they approved for us. We have to pay a hundred percent of it. We no longer get seventy percent of it back to us.
Are you saying that's a change?
So I'm trying to say that it costs for a regular county employee thirty-five thousand dollars a year. You've got a whole program here that runs self-sufficient for less than that. So why wouldn't you want to commit to at least the price of a county employee?
Because the whole point of the program is that you get matching funds from the federal and state level so that we don't have to pay out-of-pocket to have it done locally.
But if you go over that budget, you're paying a hundred percent.
Well, it's your job not to go over that budget.
I'm sorry?
It's, it's your job as the employee who's administering this budget to not exceed it, that's why you set a budget.
The constraint is the county portion that you won't go over.
No.
I asked for a budget of seventy-two thousand dollars. Your twenty thousand dollar commitment reduced it to sixty-six, six fifty. So if I go over.
Well, and you may be looking at more reductions in the future, is all I can tell you.
Then what can that reduction be, yeah? Okay. I suggest, I don't suggest anything.
We'll come back later and we'll discuss it again.
I don't, we're not gonna get anywhere with it.
Well, so you're saying you need to have seventy-two thousand operate instead of sixty-six?
It's a safety factor. It's always, you know, a shot in the dark, you never know how many breakdowns you're gonna have. You're gonna have to buy a new engine for the van, transmission, you know.
I thought we didn't own those vehicles. I was told we don't.
I'm sorry?
I was told that the county does not own those vehicles.
They don't.
So then why are we paying for new transmissions, et cetera?
We provide all of the maintenance on them.
Even major maintenance, like a transmission?
Yeah, you, because the transmission is twenty-four hundred dollars, it only costs you thirty percent.
Oh, thirty, thirty percent of that.
Maybe when you come back, could we, could we talk to someone who you work with that helps administer the state and federal portion of your budget? That would be very helpful to us, if we could have some communication with them, even if they called in on a conference. If you schedule yourself on the agenda and get them on the show.
Maybe you should read the policy book. That's why I provided all the books for you, you're all new to it. You don't know all the rules and regulations. The state policy handbook's in there with all the other information we use to run with.
Well, it's your job to relay that information, so thank you for coming today, we will speak to you next time. Mister Whacker, if you would come forward?
Good morning.
Good.
Hi.
First, Randy, I'd like to say thanks for stopping by the other day.
Yeah.
I've lived there for thirty-six years and I've never seen a commissioner from a different district at my place, so, thank you.
Well, yeah, I wanna get your roads good, if we can.
Jim, I know you're a bit in the dark on this issue, but, uh, Union Road, do I need to say anymore?
Well, we talked after, I talked to you, you caught, we put you on the agenda, then also we talked last Thursday. We talked to Mister, uh, Vaca about putting some rock in there.
And they did.
Because you showed us your pictures, did that help of it?
I would say they're not quite done yet.
Okay.
Could I suggest a novel idea for management? Perhaps they go out with a handful of flags when it's muddy and mark the spots that need to be fixed instead of putting material on where it doesn't need to be fixed? And not putting material where it does need to be fixed?
Yeah, that'd be a good idea.
I've watched him do it, I mean, it's been going on for four months and I've watched him do it on more than one occasion, this last occasion, they put nice quartzite rock on about three hundred yards of road that didn't need to be fixed.
We actually just had some comment here a few weeks ago that the roads are in better condition than ever. So I'm not sure that that's the consensus across the board.
He's got us, and hit right by Steve Snyder, uh, David.
I've, I've been there.
Right in there, yeah, well, they put on all that new gravel and of course, it's that clay stuff. That clay stuff, and yeah, it's that clay stuff, and then they, and so it's really slimy and I know you need to get.
I told them when they were putting it on that it was no good and, oh, they assured me there's lots of rock in there and that's good gravel, there's.
And then when you need this, your trucks in there to feed you, get your feed.
We got three employees, it's gotta get in and out every day, we got two semi-loads of feed a week, freight trucks.
Right.
UPS and FedEx several times a week, school bus. The school bus quit coming last spring. We had to take kids to the highway twice a day.
Yeah. Well, hopefully.
The, the spot that's left, I mean, we'll hope most of it gets better, but the spot that's left is at the intersection of Fiftieth. They gravelled past the intersection, they didn't put, still haven't put anything on it. And that would've been the first place to fix, so you could at least go around the corner and miss the road if you had to, but.
The Fiftieth and, uh.
That intersection of Fiftieth, a couple loads there and they've never, there's two spots between Thirtieth and Fortieth that they just spot gravelled in and they've never put anything on those. I mean, they're still.
You're still on Union, right, we're talking.
Just, just east of my place.
Right. And then you talked about the culvert that needs fixing, so it's washed out bad there, I saw that.
You wasted enough mo- money on that one mile of Union to have fixed at least one or two of them spots. Sorry, but I'm afraid you have.
Then a lot of gravel's pushed into the, somebody's field to the south of your culvert, your, because you got a lot of water coming from your place going south there through that culvert.
Almost six sections drive down to come down through there.
That needs more of a major.
Through two twenty-four inch tubes.
Yeah, because it's flooded over bad.
And it's, you know, if it was just an hour or two, it wouldn't be a big deal, but it can be over the road for twelve hours.
Well, this last year was bad, so it was bad for you, I'm sure.
We really haven't had big rains up there this year, we've been actually pretty fortunate, unlike other parts of the county, but. You know, most of the, most of agriculture, I wouldn't say all of it shuts down when it rains, but we don't, we gotta keep. I mean, we go rain or shine.
Yeah.
I mean, ten below or raining or whatever, we go. And I know that you've been there, Jim, but it's been awhile, we've probably tripled in size since you've been there.
Yeah, he's really building on. Have you talked to Michael or Jesse directly about like?
I called Jesse before I emailed you two.
And, and like you just said.
His comment was, I didn't think it was that bad. And I mean, I'm sure you guys know where he lives, it wouldn't be any big deal for him just to drive down that road when it's muddy, but.
Yeah, and you, you gotta, that needs fixed there with more.
I mean, I'm, I'm willing to work with you, partner with you, whatever we need to do, but we need.
Well, we need to.
My son is a partner, I mean, I'm, I'm hoping to retire in ten years or less. He's gonna be there for thirty years or more, so you got a long-term investment there.
Yeah.
So.
The county appraiser loves to come to my place because it's like a, it's a guaranteed thing every year, if there's something new, he can put on the tax roll. We're, we're about ninety-five percent sure right now, we're putting up two new buildings next year, forty-five by four hundred, so.
Maybe a good idea would be to maybe like I or Alexis or Jim or any of us, or, or maybe we would have to be there, but we could give you and our highway department people, and you could point out specifically, this needs it here, this needs it here.
I would love to do that.
So, uh, last week, we had a discussion about a different project that's coming up and going on. And I would kind of like to know, have you been told by the highway department what the plan is? You've addressed the third issues, we talked two years ago, you had some issues, we did put some culverts in.
That was great.
Okay, and that went well, that got finished, I mean.
It's worked wonderful.
Okay.
Never been water over the road since.
Great. So now we're onto this next issue, has the highway department indicated to you that there's a plan to address that?
Address what?
What you've brought up as far as this union, the, the section one.
No.
No, so they don't ha- they don't say that they have a plan? Okay, and, you know, I've been told repeatedly that each blade operator is responsible for his own route. Is that, what route is that, who is on that?
Dave Winkler's and he should know that that went past the intersection, he should've known that it needed.
Have you spoken with him about the issue, no, just Jesse?
I've talked to Jesse this time and the time before I talked to Mister O'Hare.
How long ago was that, that you brought it up to Mister O'Hare?
Well, it was about the time, it was not too long after it was recently gravelled, probably right before he sanded it.
Right, like they, they had brought in the material and then once it rained and it got mushy, then they went ahead and brought sand, so right at that time when it was on.
And actually, where they put enough sand on, it was pretty good, I mean.
It's better than clay.
I, it just seemed like we're throwing darts at a dartboard and hoping that it works.
Okay. So basically, we need to ask, what is the plan there and when is it gonna happen? And should there be any more rain in the near future? Your situation is dire because you have daily traffic that has to make it through, and there's no other option.
You know, we're starting a hatchery this year and we didn't really, this first year, we just wanted to take care of ourselves, not advocate sales to other people. We ended up selling twenty-five thousand chicks anyway, but now we're really gonna start pushing for next year chick sales, so that just means we gotta get we gotta get, not in, but out.
Right, and that particular route is your main travel.
That's our primary one, this, this truck the other day, I got lucky because I started driving roads and I got a couple miles north and it didn't rain a couple miles north, so I was able to bring.
Can you go west?
Over to the Green Valley Road.
Yeah, I know that, that way.
That's not a good way to go when it's muddy.
Okay.
Union has been fantastic until, I don't know why we decided we needed to gravel, but it was fantastic. But yeah, we came down the Green Valley Road and it only rained the last couple mi- miles and it rained hard, so everything except for Union was good. I mean, after a hard rain, the gravel roads were usually fantastic, so. But it was twenty-five miles extra for the truck to go.
Yeah, right.
Because you're not gonna go all the way up to Hunter and all the way west and then back south and then to get back and, you know, back out the same way again, so. Yes, that's our primary way in and out.
Well, yeah, it's the closest to the blacktop there, yeah.
So since you had spoken to Jesse, they brought more sand or?
They brought quartzite rock.
Quartzite rock, but it was not applied to the problem area?
Hmm, most of the problem area, a couple more loads would've done it, if they'd taken the loads that were put in the wrong place and put them there, they'd been done, but.
Okay, so, and then has there been any reshaping with the dishes or?
They reshaped it before they put the gravel on, they haven't reshaped it since, no.
Okay, I mean, I had seen where they had done from one eighty-one into, yeah, into there, and that was.
That's all, that's all they've reshaped, yeah.
Okay, but are, but you're saying from there, all the way past Fortieth and to Thirtieth?
There's two places that they just spot gravelled in, that's just, that, they used the slimy clay gravel and they've never been top dressed.
It didn't, it didn't, they didn't bring any sand for that portion?
They haven't brought any sand, they haven't brought any kind of rock. Both spots had quartzite rock put on them last spring when the hillsides were soft and then they put the gravel over the top of it and they've never been addressed since then.
And you were saying there was some washed into the field?
Well, on your, where your culverts are bad, not a lot of that gravel's washed off there, uh.
I actually believe you have a dangerous situation there because every time it rains and the water comes over the road, the edge of the road washes off. They come up with the backhoe and pull that back up on the edge of the road, well, somebody's gonna come along there with a full truck and hit that soft shoulder and they're gonna go. But that's my opinion.
Well, and I, when I visited you, that, a lot of that gravel, it's put on that south side and the field.
That's not unusual, that's normal, that's thirty-five years. Had it been fixed thirty-five years ago, it'd been paid multiple times by now.
Your recommendation would be a bigger culvert primarily, right, because it's just that much water coming through there.
Basically the same.
And they can't handle it when you get a big rain, now it goes over the top of the road and washes it out, yeah.
Basically the same thing you did there by my house.
Okay.
I mean, I put some money into that to make it happen, but.
But part of this issue is also, we spent several days in that area and several more days after that with the sanding.
You've spent a lot of time up there on that.
Well, Steve Snyder's right by there, that, that, the road to go to his house.
I have identified Union going both directions as a major throughway, it's a major collector, it's one of the most traveled routes.
Pretty much all the way from one to, into the county to the other.
Exactly, exactly.
And there are no other roads that go all the way across the county north of Highway Eighteen.
Right, and so, you know, if we can't have a plan where we say we're in this quadrant, what all needs done here? You know, and this is the lack of using the program that we purchased. If we had known that he had already said back to Mister O'Hare when they did the Schneider job and then to Jesse again since then, that this culvert is an issue, it should've been flagged and taken care of when we had the equipment there. Now we brought the equipment back, we're gonna have to take it back.
It goes clear back to when we did the, the culvert.
I know.
Because we talked about it then and I showed Mister O'Hare where they could get dirt to fix it and I'm on the conservation board and all this paperwork has to go through the conservation board, I saw the paperwork come through for it and you know, you've been on the conservation board, you know, when they do bridge stuff, that we have to give approval on it.
But you're saying the paperwork had already been done for the Union portion when they did the Thirtieth, right? So they just never followed through on the second part of that project, which was two years ago.
I don't know. You can't rely a hundred percent on ag land attacks, you need businesses in the county.
Yeah, I hear a, a nice growing business up there.
Rapidly growing.
I know you are, I'm very, uh.
Like I say, I've probably, I don't know how long it's been since you were there with me.
We got seventeen acres under net.
We got sixty now, so.
Three times.
Plus adding the hatchery.
He's huge, because I'd been up there, well, six months ago and, or a year ago, and you've got a lot bigger since then.
Did Steve take you over on the Green Valley Road and show you that over there too?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, and if I may clarify, it's not just about catering to people who are obviously bringing in what we need here, but it's also about doing the job properly. But it's also about doing the job properly, you know, if we can't have organization and have identified issues being taken care of in a timely manner. I'm sorry, two years is two years too long, we had sat in the commission room upstairs and discussed this whole entire situation. We've since then done a project on Fiftyth, which is right within the reach of that machinery being down the road. I mean, it is useless to be hauling this stuff across county constantly. And then I find out we're already, now we're doing another pet project for someone right now, so.
Can I make a suggestion on your hiring a road supervisor? Hire somebody from outside the county that doesn't have any ties to anybody in the county, maybe solicit hiring somebody from another county. I mean, pay them double. You, they're, they're in charge of so much funds, it can be wasted if not done properly. I don't know why in our area of the county, we aren't using limestone rock.
I know, it's, when, when, by your place and to the north.
Wouldn't be wearing out all these motor grader blading roads.
Well, the one nor, road north of you, I went with Mr. Snyder, he should, you have some limestone rock up there in County, right on the borderline between what, Mitchell and Osborne County?
I don't know if you still do, you used to have a, Lincoln County used to have a rock pit in Osborne County.
Well, yeah, I driven by, when I was male, I think, they have a lot of rock, I know Osborne County has a lot of limestone roads, yeah.
I mean, there, there's one time a year when the rock is bad, and that's when the frost comes out of the ground, the rest of the time, it's like a highway. Now, you need somebody that knows what they're doing to apply it, because. I've seen our county grind it into flour, and the whole point of a rock road is to have rock in it, and then they're.
And it could get to a really dusty.
Decided it's too soft and we don't use it.
It can get to a real dusty flower, and then it can blow and get kind of dust cloud, well, then you get under your vehicle, that's some of the complaints of limestone. So there are problems with it too, but you can't, I think you could blend it with our clay, which we have, seem to have plenty of in our pits. And they do have bowls, that would help with the rock filler with the clay, then it wouldn't boil.
Or use the clay and blend some quartzite, quartzite rock with it.
I'm not no aggregate expert or nothing, it's kind of a common sense thing, but it's.
But there's a difference between layering it on or mixing it in.
Needs to be mixed.
Right, I mean, we continue to do this layer and sink and layer and sink, or roll off the edges, and then, I mean. Our ditches, we could quarry those.
I'm about ready to start selling your gravel where it washes over the road there. South side.
South side of the bridge, I know, I have a pile over there, you have a truckload of that, I know.
I had to go in there and dig it out, dig a new creek channel so that the water could go through the culverts, because it built up higher than the culverts.
Yeah, is that your land on the south of that?
I am both sides.
So if we would, we could reclaim that gravel, it'd be okay with you?
When you're doing the culvert.
Well, that may be.
As long as somebody works with me, yes. I won't bother anymore.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin.
Thank you. Are you here for the highway department?
Well, I don't know that I was supposed to be, I mean, I. I wasn't going to be, but I think there were some que, requests that needed to be done, or that had been asked or whatever.
Yes, we were to have a restructure plan.
It's not, I am short on a couple, I will let you know, because obviously. I just ran out of time, I guess, I only have so much. I'm gonna hand one to Dawn as well, and then, I'm also gonna give Dawn that. Because what I did was that I copied and pasted from the PT, uh, the PDF, Dawn, and, and put it into Word, so I did. It was easier for me to do it that way, but I have the, um. The original where I marked up everything, and I'm gonna give it to Dawn, and then if you just wanna give it back, so you can see what is exactly kind of been changed. Where my chicken scratches are, by looking at that, but that's a fresh copy, uh, of the, and. I have, um, let's see, I still have several to do. So according to your flow chart, I've got. Road and Bridge Supervisor is done, Lead Mechanic, Mechanic, Assistant Road and Bridge Supervisor, Office Manager. And then the Blade, well, Motor Grader is done, a couple of these, I think, needed a whole, um. Oh, God.
New job description?
Description, yeah, yeah, so, I do have several that do need to be completed yet. And I can work on those when I get back to the office, and then I do leave.
You did this?
No, actually, Michael did that.
You're just helping him.
I am.
Prepare it.
I am.
That's fine.
And he did that, and then I'm just, we had gone over, between Jesse and Michael and I had gone over the job descriptions. So, I'm just making the corrections. And then.
Didn't get the new one for the Highway Director?
Well, no, no, I mean, what I have, yes, is the high. I, I think I have a Road and Bridge Director, Director, I don't know, one of them, I. I don't know if you have that one, Dawn, in the. Is that in there? And. I guess. I think the way that they, when we had all talked, is that, I think. I don't know, because I wasn't here, but I think what was asked is to do a flow chart on how. They feel it to be run, or employee-wise, and so that is what they came up with. And then, the Road and Bridge Supervisor, so there wasn't a Director, so to speak, I mean, this was what they.
It's just that, yeah, the titles don't necessarily matter, but I was just wondering where that other job description is, because it has a lot more. Responsibility in it than any of these do.
I don't know, you might compare, I don't know, you might compare, I have, I don't know, all I know is I'm just making corrections. And again, I have several to do, left to do, and then I think, let's see, Jesse put together. A project list. And we added actually this morning, this Jolene Worth, because our blade guy is actually going to be getting out there on Wednesday. Yeah, she did, that's what I said, she did, but this, yeah.
The job that is happening on Milo, what is that one?
I'm, I don't know anything on the projects, I'm sorry to say, I, I do not know anything on him. I, uh, I thought when I looked through here, there was something about Milo, maybe I'm mistaken.
Twentieth and Milo go east, but that's, but that's a culvert, I was talking about gravel, so that's probably not it.
Yeah, I, I do not know. I'm just, I'm a delivery person.
Yep, thank you very much.
I will get the rest of those done up, I, I think according to, I think I might have three here, and then. There may be one that they have to kind of write up possibly. Maybe not, I could be very wrong, I'm not for sure, I have so many chicken scratches on here, but, anyway, I do have three. Um, one was a, um. Uh, like the Equipment Operator, and then the Truck Driver one, which it, it was just kind of re. It was revised, it looks like on seven-nine, but just changing like Public Works to Road and Bridge, because Public Works is no longer. So it was just kind of cleaning up really what is there. Um, and then a new one would be a part-time Office Assistant.
When will you have those ready, do you think?
I can go back and get them done now, I just clearly, I mean, I ran out.
That would help, that would have a complete submission to you, that's all we really need.
Mm-hmm, yeah, I have those three, and then I'll go back and check and make sure that, that one is not missing, I, I thought there was one more on there, but I could be wrong.
Did you have one for the Office Assistant?
That's, that is the one, I have it here, I have it here, but it needs to be, uh.
Copied?
Yeah, yeah, let me see, it is right, yeah.
Well, I don't think, that, that's a new job description, correct? That's new.
Yes, but, yeah.
Well, Deb, it's Randy up here at the post office, so.
He has basically about the same stuff as, with less duties, because, you know, we talked, you know, twenty, twenty-five hours a week. So.
Yeah, I will, I just wanted to show you that I have.
To help you out, right, you probably need somebody, because you're buried, I know that.
Yep, I am thinking fast, so.
Yeah, if you get that back, and then we'll have a complete package before the sun goes down, then we can work on that.
Yeah, that sounds great.
So maybe if you would stick around just for a few minutes, uh, Mrs. O'Hare, are you ready to discuss now the, the Wilson Lake Estates?
But I think some of it probably needs to be in executive session, so I don't know if she needs to be present, we're talking about some liability issues.
Okay.
Okay. Is there any, any discussion as far as, I, well, let me put it this way, I would like to know. What our position is with the Attorney General opinion that we received, that would not be. We'll let you know, I guess.
Okay.
Or if you're interested, you can watch the video, I suppose.
Okay, but do I stay or not stay then?
Well, I mean, I'm saying, she's the one answering the phone, if someone from Wilson Lake Estates calls, and I think it would be appropriate for her to know. What is going on, because she's answering the phone.
Phone here or there?
At the highway department.
Yeah, well, yeah, in other words, you could go back there, right?
No, I'm saying if, I'm saying she needs to know what we're talking about, because I've already received phone calls from the people wondering, they've been here. Three weeks ago, wondering what's going on, have you received any phone calls from Wilson Lake Estates?
Not one.
Okay.
Not one.
Well, you're the only one in the office today.
Yes.
Okay, we'll, we'll let you go and.
We could, we'll update, we could update you maybe on what's going on, okay?
What kind of decisions we come to for that.
You could go back.
Thank you, thanks for coming over.
So we need a closed session, do you think?
Totally, or part of the time?
Well, I mean, this is the first time I've come before this board on this issue, and I think I need to know what you guys are talking about, what you're thinking about, and I think there's liability issues. Associated with it, so I think it's better that it's an executive session, to be honest with you.
Well, the first thing that I want cleared though, regardless of liability, is the Attorney General opinion. That the county commission approval of the plat is what stands as far as giving us responsibility for those roads.
To a certain degree, I don't know how, I don't, haven't seen the original plat, I don't know how that's diverged, I don't know any of that information. All I know is there was an Attorney General opinion since ninety-one that says that if there was roads and things laid out, that there are responsibilities. And that's consistent with case law, is that courts are more likely to say it's the county's responsibility than not. And there's not tons of case law on that issue, because most of the issues are dealt with at the district court level, and aren't necessarily appealed up. So you're not gonna see a lot of legal precedence on these kind of issues.
But also, there was, we had a resolution of ninety-nine too, too, I think, instead of divorcing ourselves from that, right?
We attempted to approach their, um, what do they call that, the association, their homeowners association. And ask them to relinquish us from having responsibility of the maintenance there, which they did not agree to. So, I mean, the paperwork trail leads me to believe that we had committed ourselves with the approval of the plat. And then get, and then them receiving, or us, we requested the Attorney General opinion, actually. And then, um, and then later on, asked to be relinquished from that. So my question is, according to the Attorney General opinion, if we did approve, which I did see the plat, I mean, there were a few changes, there's a loop now at the top. Which wasn't in the original, but this issue of having a right-of-way, X amount of feet per Y of foot of road. Is that grandfathered in then, because the plat approval was not for forty-foot right-of-way, sixty-foot?
I don't really answer to that question.
Okay, because I think that's some of the discussion, if and when we do road work, are we assuming that they have to?
Well, if they're your roads, then act like they're your roads, do the roads the way you wanna do them.
But there's a house on the right-of-way, so.
And that's, that's an extended circumstance.
Yeah, so how do you deal with that? Just go with it the way it is, it's grandfathered in, because Michael was here saying that, you know, you have your. Feet, so many feet, you gotta have a roadway for the county to operate.
Right.
But we don't have that, because they're grandfathered in with a house, house next to the road, and so, we can't turn, turn on our house. Yeah, so.
No, but there also can be changes to that, I mean, there can be things done, but there has to be agreements that are reached between everyone.
Waiver or something on that.
Possibly.
Yeah, well, that's where we're at here, and we wanna know is, are we now. Responsible as this is a county road, and that's where we're at here, that we have to maintain and manage and take care of. Because it wasn't, it used to, it's kind of, we partly did, we partly didn't, minimum maintenance road, right? So that means we went there once a year, if the snow was two feet tall, we'd go in there with a grader and help them out, but maybe that'd be it. So, but now we're saying, okay, we're gonna treat these roads as like we treat all county roads, maintain them, grow gravel, so forth and so on. And that's where we don't know what to do, I don't know what to do, and that's kind of why we're asking you here.
My question, if we could jump to the statute about the twenty years of no maintenance, what does that exactly mean? Because like he said, I mean, we've gone in there to pile snow, but we haven't gravelled it.
And again, I think these are liability issues that need to be discussed in executive session, and I realize that there's just this confrontation. That we talk about this in the public, I just, I'm recommending that we go into executive session to just talk, talk about this. I mean, I just do.
We just wanted to make an overview of what's going on.
Right.
I mean, this is a potential litigation situation, and I think it needs to be treated as such.
I, I agree. Okay. Do we have our sheet here somewhere? I have one here. We gotta get our cheat sheet out.
It's okay.
Figure out how to do all this.
Attorney client.
Go out and do this stuff, Alexis, you got one? We gotta be attorneys here to be county commissioners, nobody told me that.
I move to enter into executive session, what timeframe would you like?
Uh, I would think fifteen minutes would be sufficient.
Minutes for the purpose of discussing. Liability issues for Wilson Lake Estates. Justification pursuant to KSA seventy-five forty-three nineteen two B, and that would be number two. For consultation with an attorney for the public body, and that will be to reconvene in the commission room with the county attorney and the Board of County Commissioners.
I'll second.
Is there any further discussion, this is moved and seconded for a fifteen-minute executive session. If not, those in favor vote aye, aye, motion carries.
I'll figure it out.
Do you have it in your near future to get back to us on the, um, on the mill levy for the aging, because we're working on the budget?
I kinda have it done.
Can you, do you wanna just write, can you write to us?
Send us a letter?
Why don't you just, yeah, because we're gonna be going over the budget.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're a little confused on that.
I get it, I get it.
We, it automatically expires at the time. No, you don't have to move back in, it, when your time limit is up, it automatically expires your executive session.
Good job, good job.
Oh, now you took, we leave and you turn on the AC, really? That's how this works.
I can't hear you talk if it's on too.
I know. I'm just picking on you only.
I know you are.
Madam Chairman, I move, have a motion. I move, we direct the Road Department to immediately barricade the landslide in the Wilson Lake Estates.
I'll second that. Is there any further discussion? If not, I'm sorry. It's pretty big, but good, thank goodness, it's just on the edge, but there was a, a whole cliff created.
Can you tell me what road that actually is?
Out there.
Bridge, road loop?
Can you come and look at this?
Well, I don't gonna know anything.
I don't know that this actually has a name to it.
You don't have it up there, I don't think, I had a damn map here, I took them out, and it came today.
So you're talking this lake lane?
Yeah, I'm gonna have a map.
I think this, this coming down going here, and this is like a dead end.
What? All this, all this rain and this spring. All this, all this rain and this spring, yeah, and a road, and a culvert, and a ditch not being clean and washed over and. It's, it's right where you come down, going to Hell Creek Bridge, before you get to the marina, that road that goes up that way, isn't it?
No.
What are you, what are you talking, like, what are you talking?
Yes, you take the, you take that.
You take, so you're talking that one going north?
Before you go down the hill, you turn into that little plan, then you take a left, and it goes down and down the hill, and right there, there's an intersection, when you go right, which is back technically to the north, there's that wash down the hill and, and cut into the road, so people, there are six parcels back there, and I believe three homes. And three empty lots, yeah. Okay, it has been moved and seconded, any further discussion? Those in favor vote aye.
Aye.
Hmm, motion carries.
Madam Chairman.
I got a map of it, yeah, and I'll bring it later, okay?
Yes.
I have another motion, please.
Sure.
I move, we have the county attorney, who out for bids, provide us with an as-built survey of the roads in the Lincoln County portion of Wilson Lake Estates.
I will second that as well.
Got that going?
Survey of roads in this Lake Estates.
An as-built survey of the roads of the Lincoln County Park of the Wilson Lake Estates.
Is there any further discussion? If not, those in favor vote aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
I'll bring you by a map.
So just to be clear, we've already asked an engineering firm to assess the landslide and get back to us on what actually should be or needs to be done there, so that we're not just doing it ourselves. And then, this is a separate motion to then bid out the performance of creating and generating a map with actual dimensions as they are currently, because we have a road, we have a, at the end of that road that I showed you, there's a house that's actually built up onto the road, um, and there's, there are some issues with easements and right-of-ways and utility situations, so we need a company to actually produce a real map, not just what was originally approved, because there have been changes since then, and houses built, and things restructured, and, and we cannot have the same proportion of road to right-of-way as we do on our regular roads that are in a grid formation, just because they're on the hillside and other issues like that, so that's where we stand on that issue.
When, okay, um, with these houses that were built in wrong places and stuff, how do they tax that? Because if you have a lot and it's supposed to be a certain place, but they didn't build on that place, how do they assess the taxes?
They have to ask that upstairs.
I think they're on their lot, they're just.
They're not back from the right-of-way.
They're not back from the right-of-way of the road.
So let's say a twenty-four-foot road has a forty or sixty-foot right-of-way, most homes here would be beyond that, into the parcel. But this is maybe right on the line, I would assume, because it's kind of like the road edge and the house is right there. So I don't think that they're not on the property as much as they're not back from the right-of-way that is supposed to be clear for maintenance, ditches, et cetera.
Or you can say you're needing the county attorney to permission to apply a survey.
No, she's to set, she's to set up the request for bid. We are bidding it out to companies, but she is going to be the one that actually formulates that, instead of us as the public body, that way she can do it, and that way the numbers are all channelled.
Uh, Wilson Lake Estates, that's the first one near the bridge that area there, right?
Yeah, the Lincoln County Park.
Okay, uh, nineteen seventy-eight, I helped vary the water line, so. Some of those lots are only three feet wide in place, and there, there's always enough place for them to build, not five of their house, not to, with their pie shape, so.
I know, they're oddball looking. We had a, we had a layout of it here. I don't have it here, I've left it home. Yeah.
I have a comment, if you are interested in, if you're interested in property out there, when you go there, realtors will tell you, in fact, they give it to realtors. Make sure you survey this property, because they are not by a professional lot. That means there's been changes over time.
Probably true.
So the homeowner has some responsibility.
Originally, they had to be three acres per lot, or they would have to put in a sewer system. So they were originally three-acre lots.
Did they have to give right-of-ways for roads and stuff back then?
I don't know.
Oh, is that so they could have their own leach bed or whatever?
Back then, you know what, the roads were just put in.
Well, back then, they just built, people just built a house and made their own road, got their own grader out, and built what they wanted, it was not a controlled thing. It's like farms, people just built farms out of what they want, and, uh, you know.
It was our Phoenix and the Norman and Scott, or the Bell's, or that guy.
Well, that's why we want to ask those.
Right, go from existing.
Yeah, we're going to get an official map that we can then, uh, uh, somewhat approve, as opposed to the original plat that was before everything was really out there, and so that way, there's something official on paper for the courthouse.
So they are being considered county roads?
Okay. We've got a lot of work to do for it.
Well, we're looking into that, Lana, that's, we're, we're not sure yet how we're going to deal with that.
So it's a non-county road, then, or are you making?
Well, we only.
We have liability.
We only didn't, we, we would do, we did a minimum maintenance and maintaining, they only may go down once a month, or once a year with a grader, like if they have two, three feet of snow, that's, that's a kind of courtesy thing. Now, we're wanting to know if we're going to go further than that, we haven't decided that yet.
Before we can decide whether the county roads are, whether we're going to assume the maintenance or not, we need to have the as-bills and some other stuff, because all are liability issues. So until such times we get all this information in, we can't say, yes, we're going to fix those roads, no, we're not going to fix those roads. We don't have a basis for doing any one, so we've got to get our data first, and then we'll talk.
So at this point, they are still considering private drives?
They, they're in limbo right now.
Yeah.
They're private, nor public, and we can't do anything, seriously, they are.
I, I'm just, I have an issue over the regulations with the post office, if their private drives were not to touch them, if they're county roads, then there's difference.
You're one of them, uh, school bus routes, snow removal, all that stuff, but we, before we can decide what roads are, we can take the original plat and, and if we said this is what is going to be done, well, that's ridiculous, because it's been changed and overbuilt so many times. So until we get the as-bills and we compare it to the original plat, we can decide who goes what, who does what, where's what, and then at that time, we will have a motion to assume the control of those roads, or to not assume the control, but we can't do any one, so we'll get all this stuff.
Here's the issue, they were not built by the county, which is different than the county absorbing a road. Do you see what I'm saying? They're, they're either building a road, or they're absorbing a road onto their mapping system. So we're talking about absorbing them into our mapping system, they were built by someone else, they were funded by someone else, but we have had graders up and down them and snow plows, et cetera. So what we're doing now is getting an official map of that section, and when they were absorbed by the county, because they approved the map, there are extensions of roads and little offshoots and driveways and such, so we are going to establish exactly where the county road ends and the private drives begin. So that's not established at this point, however, I would say, have you been, have, have they been delivering mail there?
Yes, we deliver mail there, but I have a new customer, and I'm, uh, my supervisor's opinion of that, not knowing anything, is that those are all private drives, and that we should make them all out to a highway to be serviced.
Mailboxes out to highway.
The best thing you can do is stall the boss, and say, boss, I'd love to give you the opinion, but tell the county commissioner to get off the knife.
Well, can't you request that anyhow? Can, can you not request them to put in a mail, um, what would you call that, like a?
A CBU box.
CBU box.
Um, but, okay, we don't do that. When it becomes a new establishment, they will do that. So those, those are not ours.
What's it called, a C?
A, a central, a CBU.
B.
Central box.
Yeah.
Okay, so as, as part of our mapping, we could request that in order for us to take over whatever portions of the road we deem county property, we would request that all of the residents living from that point on participate in a CBU. Wouldn't that be beneficial to the, to the post office?
Well, yes and no. Because I'm not sure, I, I don't want to say yes, because then it says, well, Leanne, you know, blah, 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 but.
Well, could you just get back to us with something, if you talk it over with?
Well, they're really deeming everything on that Wilson Lake as a private drive.
But you don't have the authority to do that, if the county says it's county road, then.
Well, see, that's my problem, I can't argue higher up, if you don't look at me and go, it's a county road, Leanne.
Well, you're going to have to wait a few weeks for that, but what we're saying, I'm, what I'm saying is, part of our negotiation situation, we could ask them to help out our local post office and our post barriers by saying, we'd appreciate that if and when we take over X amount of road, and we establish that yours is private and yours is not, but anyone living there, we could ask them to, to put in that CBU.
Well, see, we will make it mandatory, because that's the problem.
If it's private.
If it's private.
Right, but.
And if it's not established already, see what I'm saying? Say, Randy Lovan moved there tomorrow, if it's not already established.
I, I would get service.
There you go.
Or it's very easy to have service.
Say that again.
If the road's not safe for travel, they don't serve.
Right, and see, the one I'm debating on right now is one that, I'm not real big on hydro, but just last Tuesday, trying to figure out where this residence is, and was not big on the road. If it got a little slushy, sloshy, psh, Steve's going off, Leanne, I mean, it just, it gets where curves go down to that residence, that is technically.
Well, here's what I can tell you.
The same road.
One hundred percent of that is not going to be private, so there's your answer. You're not going to get an automatic establishment of no service there, because it's not going to be one hundred percent private. There are, there will be tributaries that may be privately established, so it'd be in the best interest of the post office to have the county negotiate the point of putting a mail service CBU box up at the, up at the entrance.
Who?
I don't know if the county gets involved in United States Post Office, their business.
It would be the Lake Association.
Yeah. We're, we're not, that's not our, that's not our responsibility, I'll hand it to you, access to get involved with the post office business, you're federal government stuff.
Federalities.
You're more important than us.
Actually, that's not true, if anyone would open that constitution there and read it, you could establish the fact that your local precedent set is always, always above any other level of government, unless you're infringing on another person's constitutional right. That's the only time that.
Post office is a private corporation, a foreign government.
Which means that they have even less say, because if the county's establishing the roads and where they end and begin, then it's, then that's on, that's on us.
No, but they set up theirs.
We don't.
They, they set up their business, you guys set up your business how you're going to deliver mail.
But what she's saying is you automatically have to participate in the CBU if you're a private drive, because they will not deliver on a private drive. And I'm telling you that there's no chance that one hundred percent, once you turn off the road, is going to be private drive.
I get that. What, what I was just here is to try to figure out what is private and what wasn't.
And we won't know that.
We have, we're trying to figure that out too, right now.
It's all.
That's what the map is going to be for.
Yeah.
This, this Lake Association, is this a government? What, what are you doing?
No, and that's not even who we're dealing with, we're dealing with the homeowners association.
Okay, the, the homeowners association.
Wilson Lake Estates.
Who, who's in charge of that?
Well, that one, the infield.
No, he's not, no, he's not. Um.
The Allen guy.
Allen, I think it's Allen, correct? Is he the president? And then that woman with the treasure, she's the president?
Oh, that one lady, yeah.
I think Allen, Allen, does it start with an S or an F?
He said that he was the president.
Yeah, and I think she had the information, she must have been the treasurer's secretary, yeah.
I think she's like the historian.
Okay.
If she was called, um.
They meet annually, and they've just, they've presented to the board in the past, and they came with some, they keep some of the information correspondence that's happened with the county, so they don't, they're not a governing body as much as a representative of the original development.
Allen, and I don't know how you.
Fabrizius or something?
Yeah. F A B R I.
Fabrizius.
Fabrizius.
I U S. F A B R I C. I U.
Manager of the car.
Do they have, manager of car, and.
Basically, the manager of the car.
I'll track him down, though.
That's we're done for now?
We got that dog beat? You're done beating on that dog?
Yes, we need to move on, um, did you have?
You're just going away, are you? Okay.
Okay, um, so we're just receiving a letter from the Sylvan Senior Center that they are notifying the neighbor to the south that their roof has collapsed, and they would like some correspondence as far as the intent of the property owner. Dawn, did you bring every budget, or you're, you did?
You're too far away from moving into your other building, yeah, you're going to have to do something here. I can show you a picture. Uh, this is the picture, well, we had a drone fly over, uh, Friday afternoon, that's the overhead shot, so don't move on yet.
So this is the east?
Yeah, the east.
That'd be the, that's the back of the building.
It's a full width of the building plus, uh, about twelve feet, so about four hundred and twenty square feet. That is the roof from the drone, and I got one other, one more picture I stepped. Where'd you have that? Okay, here, I'll get it. There, that's the overhead shot of the, I'm looking down the roof. And then, the next picture I must show you, I went in the basement Saturday morning, and that's the basement.
Oh, yeah, that's the day.
That's your wall, right, that's their wall, Kurt eats basement.
I don't have, some of them, I don't pick one, I, I lost that. Well, you was not.
The roof is all now down.
When I had it, when I gave it to him, Jim or somebody else.
She had no plans to refurbish and rebuild or anything.
It had, I don't know when it was run down, but our wall isn't wet, our interior wall is now an exterior wall.
Yeah.
And that's, Randy, that's the picture of the basement from our side.
So you gave Misty Whacker a letter, too?
She's getting, she's getting notice, yeah.
What's she going to do, has she talked to you?
She hasn't, she's been approached before about doing something, never did anything, I suspect nothing.
So, what do you want us to do?
Nothing, we're just giving you notice.
Okay, okay.
It just says CC at the bottom.
Okay. Well, thanks for telling us, but, so is your building there now, and do dangerous to work out of, or what?
Well, the roof is down, the good thing about all this is, we got new roof on that building, it's, it's almost ninety-nine percent clean, but we got more of it there.
We have a question, your comment?
Sylvan Senior Center had a structural engineer come out, and I've got to use it, I don't know.
I think that's true.
That's my second, or that's my first.
We need to get, those are down.
And we added one jack, one jack, to manage that.
I know, and we can always switch, that's my thing, it's a different one there.
I agree.
Which is big for me, because from here, but.
I'm just letting you know.
Yeah, oh, we appreciate that.
And you have a meeting, yeah, I suspect the roof is down, yeah, we didn't know it, yeah. Now, when that came down, nobody could have been in our building, they would have heard that crash, you know, but it looks like it came down after the last rain, the water damaged the wall. But now we have an open stud of wall, as our experience. But now we have an open stud of wall as our exterior down. It's cheap rock and every time. We're gonna cover that until we get left.
Okay.
No questions at all.
The structural engineer when we did that said that that was going to happen. That that roof was all connected and he was, he was, Whacker did something about it, he was causing damage to that.
Right, but there is no building city code for those kind of issues. They can't condemn it, so it's... No, there's not. I, I've already asked.
We could take a chainsaw and cut her away.
There you go. Just don't farm her while.
Okay, we are now going to announce our choices for what we would like to consider for new benefits management companies. I will go first. My top three are Hub, Pick and Call Valley. Yeah, yeah, but I was actually looking to see if he had that pick.
I don't have the pick when I, I had it, but I don't know what I did with it. And my, uh...
It's a spiral. It is a spiral? I thought it was one, three, four.
Well, she left that too, but there was a spiral with the presentation.
Yeah, and I misplaced it. I can't find mine either. But I like that, I like the pick too.
Okay.
Alexis and the Hub also. And then I like this, uh, this one, the FCMI. I know we've had some issues with it, but... But that's who's my, Jim, you have that?
I like, uh, Call first and then Pick and then Hub.
Okay. So the three common are Call, Pick and Hub because we had two of those. So the only, the only odd one out would be FCMI. So between Call, Pick and Hub, we need to do some sort of analysis so that we can move forward because they're gonna need time to collect our claims history and, um, what do you call that? Or, um, the pharmaceutical information, so...
Our census of all the people and their history, right?
Right. Um, I would just make a quick argument for Hub because that's my number one pick and that's due to the fact that they have, it seems like they have more resources. I know it's a larger company. As much as I'm supporting, for supporting small businesses, I do think in this situation, it's an easy phone call resource that they have a variety of options. I mean, and of course, they had a good layout so that you could physically see what they do and how they perform.
I agree too, a hundred percent.
The only thing I don't like about them is they weren't, they didn't seem to be as up to date on how to provide the partially self-insured. But we were, we were warned by the woman from Pick to not do that first year off the bat. So I think I would feel more comfortable not doing that the first year which, because we always have the option to go into that. But until we have a clarification on what our claims history is and, and where we fall financially by using one of these companies, it, it seems like, the way that woman explained it anyhow, and for my lack of knowledge in the field, it seems like it'd be a safer bet to use a company to do the brokering for the first year. And then if we want to move into self-funded, we can always do that the following year.
I think Hub has to do it self-funded. I think we just talked about that.
Okay. He also seems to be more reasonable in pricing. The commission on the dollar amount versus the one thousand a month was, it was almost, it was more than double that, I believe. I think it was more than double, we had two thousand or so a month. What did you think about Hub as, or you listed them third?
It's, they're all pretty close in my estimate because I have almost no experience with...
Me too.
health insurance, so I would have to defer to some of my, after what I looked at, money and services, I looked at Call kinda first and then Pick and Hub.
Well, and it's harder for you because you didn't hear the other presentations.
He wasn't here involved in some of that, Jim. So, yeah, and I'm new at all this too, so I'm not definitely on health insurance and benefits, so I'm not up to it. But he seemed organized, they seem like they're big and I think also to help Dawn out to, for as an HR person to handle a lot of the employee issues, they wouldn't, hopefully wouldn't have to come use so much Dawn with these Hub and these Pick. What? Yeah, right, right, the benefits department.
Well, and there were also a lot of questions that they can answer as far as family medical leave and stuff like that that depending on how we go into the next year setting up our HR department, those questions can be easily answered now over the phone instead of relying on someone to be educated through the classes. Not that I don't believe in that, but it's nice to have that resource. Um, so I would suggest, if we're going to have a special meeting this week, could we ask them to be able to conference call them from our meeting? That way we can...
All three of those?
I think we should.
Alright.
Just call them, get a few more questions answered so that we can have a really good comparison and be done with it this week and either make our decision or make it next Monday.
We can probably, after we listen to them.
Okay.
I do too.
So we have a, a meeting, we tentatively set the date for this Thursday at ten. Is that okay for everyone? So Dawn, if you could schedule maybe ten, ten thirty and eleven? And if they can't, let us know. If we had to push it, if we had to meet earlier, I'm fine with that.
That's fine too, I could do.
Or if we had to wait over the lunch for one of them, I think that's fine too. Whatever you can schedule for Thursday.
Yeah.
Worst case scenario, could we move it to Friday?
I got, I can't Friday.
Can't Friday?
No.
So worst case scenario, Monday?
Yeah.
In the afternoon?
Thursday should work.
I'm saying if, if they can't have anyone available for us on Thursday, just push it to Monday.
Okay.
Okay. So now we need to go over budgets. And have we not received any departments that you are aware of? I'm trying to think.
You haven't received mine.
I thought we did.
No. And then I normally do like all of the county, I do your guys' and I do the rest of the county. And I did human resources last time. I just really don't know what's the, at this point in time, so that's kinda why I didn't do.
Okay.
But, and I don't think you've received ambulance.
No.
I'm not really sure.
Yes, does he, have you spoken with him?
I have not about budget.
Right, right. So that, that's kind of up in the air since he's relatively new for him to...
We should probably request it.
He could look at last year's and look at where we are right now. But we should make an official request from him.
Okay, and then these are copies for Jim because he hasn't received any copies of budgets. So I don't know what's the easiest, um, I did make new copies. But I can make new copies or you can write up online.
Turn it off.
Yeah.
So, and then, other than that, I'm not a hundred percent sure. I meant to grab the budgets there on the chart.
Kinda just load them out.
Okay, and I kinda looked back through, I think the Lincoln Senior Center and the Council on Aging, we really don't have anything for. And I've double checked, but I think everything was for twenty nineteen, so I'll call them. That's District Court.
Mm-hmm.
Um, will you go grab some of these?
So I don't know if you just wanna set up your own little spreadsheet there or, or you wanna fill in this information, but...
I have all my copies of the budgets we've been giving.
I'm gonna just, I'll just get, I'll lay them out for you one at a time.
I'll just review what you got there if you wanna do it.
Yeah.
Or you can, you can, how do you normally do this budget stuff?
Normally, the appraiser, or the, um, auditor would come in and give you a spreadsheet that already had them, the numbers plugged in. But what I wanted to do and what had been suggested maybe even by them, which probably because I had been asking why we're doing it this way for two years, they said, go ahead and look at it. Give them the numbers that you want plugged in because it is highly inappropriate to just do a wish list and then try to rule it down from there.
So what you, what you wanted to do is look at them right up front and then maybe make decisions to, about them up front right now, like, you know?
I think we need to look at where we are. We need to, we all need to know what the numbers were last year, what they are requesting this year and where that puts us as a total. We need to look at the overall numbers.
Right, okay.
Okay, there was another one copy left. Do you each want a copy of this year's budget or what's? I don't know what you guys want, so this is this year's.
That, you mean what we're currently in?
Yes.
So Randy, you could fill in out to the right-hand column. That'll show us from what we're working on now to what the projected is for next year. And I'll give you those numbers as we go through here. Dawn, what is this?
Oh, that is our unemployment, so that's really not a budget. But I give it to them because they hacked that into the employee benefits.
Okay.
This Fair Board budget thing is not any good.
Why?
Can't read it.
Yeah, that is slight. Sorry, that's our new copier.
It's alright, we figure out what it says, I can write them in.
You only really need to care about what it is for county allocation, which I think is like ten thousand.
I can make up a little bit more about it if you can read that.
Does the hospital give us a new budget this year?
No, because theirs runs from March to March, so they're currently operating.
They gave us that, whatever it is that they gave you from PDC that you guys were creating.
Okay.
I don't know what I did.
What does that mean? Oh, okay.
I think you had the two numbers together.
Randy, do you wanna read off with the, like in order and then I can try to find, yeah?
From the top, I mean, well, that, those, is that what you want?
Yes, because I'll now find you the number and then you can fill it out off to the right-hand side. Why don't you go ahead?
Well, they have general fund first, general.
We don't have a general yet.
You go to fund seven A or page seven A three.
Okay. That's where I should start here.
Are you gonna read the totals or just each like that?
I don't know.
Seven A is the totals for everything that's out of County General.
Okay.
So that's like this comtech.
You want, you'll propose for two nineteen, two thousand nineteen, the last one or what?
These are all the little, these, these would be all the...
Those would be little.
Yeah, that, that.
Okay. Well, for county commission, which is us, forty-eight thousand.
That's their current year, right?
Yeah, and last year too, two thousand eighteen and nineteen.
It was the same.
We don't have our own budget, do we, for ourselves?
Well, not individually, it's for our, it's for the commission.
It's the same, right?
Forty-six thousand, you said, right?
Forty-eight.
Or forty-eight, sorry.
Forty-eight. Should we write that down here or were you going to?
Just go ahead and plug in the same number for, yeah. Is Conservation District coming out of general fund?
Uh, yeah.
Then there's county clerk. You don't have yours yet.
Fair Board comes, Fair Board comes out of general fund, right?
Yes, that's an appropriation.
Dawn, do you have yours yet or, oh, well, I'll just go on then.
No, yeah, let's skip her until we get...
Do we have county treasurer?
Yes.
Okay, treasurer.
That's three.
Um, I have one hundred and twelve, four hundred and twenty.
Okay. Last year was a hundred and nine thousand twenty-four, so they're requesting another three thousand.
Okay, next.
County attorney.
One hundred and seventeen, five hundred.
That's the same as last year?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, register of deeds.
Forty-six thousand, four hundred and seventy.
Yeah, last year was forty-five thousand, three hundred. Okay, sheriff.
If I'm reading this correctly, forty, four hundred, forty-five thousand, four hundred and forty-three, twenty cents.
Okay, and last year was four thirty-one, so that's a fourteen thousand dollar increase. District, clerk of District Court.
Sixty-seven thousand, two hundred and eighteen.
Okay, last year sixty-four, eight five hundred, so that's about a twenty-five hundred dollar increase.
Excuse me, one second. Why didn't you tell me that you approved two thousand nineteen with sixty-seven?
And what was it?
It was because they have reinforced...
Oh, well, from sixty-four thousand, eight hundred and fifty, fifty, sixty-seven thousand, two eighteen.
Okay.
So, so...
That's, I just, I just... Yeah, twenty some hundred, I didn't approximate it, yeah.
Okay.
Courthouse General.
We don't have. Well, you know, is that broken down at all on the, is that broken down at all in the budget?
Was a hundred and fifty-three thousand, two hundred and fifty.
But do you have any breakdowns? Because I have the little, you know, there's CASA, there's the Fair Board, Conservation District.
It's not right in here.
No, it's gonna be on page seven D.
Seven B, okay.
D, D as in dog.
Dog, okay.
It's gonna be the last one.
Seven dog. There's county general, yeah, it's broken down quite a bit here.
Okay, so go ahead and list those. I'll see what I have.
Mental health, sixteen thousand, six hundred. From two thousand nineteen proposals.
Hold on, I had that somewhere. Where was, didn't we have?
It's a packet thing.
Well, I can, I got all the old ones listed here. I just don't know the new ones.
Oh, seventeen thousand, one hundred and ten and ten cents.
That's the new one, seventeen thousand, one hundred and ten?
Mm-hmm.
For, uh, mental health?
Central Kansas Mental Health, got it.
Alright, economic development, one hundred and seventeen, thousand, two hundred and eighty-nine dollar.
Well, that would be according to whatever two mills works out to be this year, but again, that's kind of in question. I forgot to ask the attorney that. I'll email him. What's next?
Uh, historical society, forty-five hundred.
We didn't get a question for that.
That's for both of them, Lincoln and Sylvan.
No, they never request, it's an allocation that...
They don't have a request in, so you could just write the same dollar amount for right now.
Forty-five hundred.
That's for both of them, Lincoln and Sylvan.
It's the county.
Yeah.
Okay. Hospital maintenance, five hundred and eighty-six thousand, four hundred and forty-four dollars.
So that's whatever ten mill comes out to be.
Yeah.
But that's, again, that's up to... That's a...
So we don't have their budget, do we?
Just write the same dollar amount right now because we don't know what the ten, I don't, I don't have that factor.
Well, the valuation notice that I gave you guys, if any of you still have it.
I do have it, but...
You can take that dollar amount times. I don't have that on the computer anymore.
I have it somewhere.
It'll be six hundred and eleven thousand, five hundred and twenty-four dollars.
Six hundred and eleven thousand, if that would go to...
Five hundred and twenty-four, six eleven, five twenty-four, and that would be ten mills. Could you do the two?
There's twenty-five thousand, you know?
Yeah.
Because of the, because of the valuation.
Yeah, but I'm just saying that, that's up twenty-five.
Yeah.
Yeah. Go back to the, um, economic development and she's gonna give us the number for two mills.
A hundred and twenty-two thousand, three hundred and four dollars.
One twenty-two, three oh four.
Yeah, okay, and it was one seventeen, so that's up five hundred, five thousand, yeah.
Okay, so what's next?
Special alcohol and drug was a thousand bucks.
That's just a every year.
Thousand dollar deal.
Okay.
Okay, uh, services for the Elroy, seventy-five thousand.
We chose a dollar amount for that.
They spent that way for three years.
The, the total max would be two mil, but we just chose a dollar amount, so...
We're gonna do that again?
Right, and we can choose whatever we want. So preliminarily, you just wanna write the same number in and we'll, we'll talk about that later.
Same number, okay.
Yeah.
For now. Okay, uh, occupational center of Kansas.
OCCK.
With the seventy-five, hundred and sixty-nine dollars. I spent that for three years.
It was like a big packet I bought.
No, that's comtech.
Yeah, it has like all of their updates and everything that they bought, paperclip.
This is Central Kansas, this is Central Kansas Medical Health. Flint House, CASA. This is a, this is Regional Planning Commission. I thought, I remember. Reservation. This is my stack.
Um, is this it?
Nope, that's Central Kansas Medical.
I think they were the ones, was OCCK the ones that was the same amount?
I knew we had it. This stack is what we've already done. This is the bus. We've done this, we're working on this. These are separate.
We have too much paper. That's the problem.
There was someone under this paperclip. I don't know where it went, but it's sort of like a bill out form that I have to go out over here.
The Conservation District? It's, it's on yours here. It, that's my stack, so it's on yours, wherever yours is here, it's here, because I saw it. The conservation district, it's, it's on yours here, it, that's my stack, so it's on yours, wherever yours is here, it's here, cuz I saw it. But I know, okay, skip to the next one, please, I don't know where OCCK went.
Okay, I'll just, yeah, what is, is seventy-five hundred last, it was been that same for three years here, so.
Here, this is, here, this is your paper.
Okay, soil conservation, twenty-two thousand.
Okay, I did see that, conservation district, I have proposed budget. Thirty-four thousand, four hundred, thirty-eight, fourteen cents.
Thirty-four thousand, four hundred and eighteen?
Four hundred and thirty-eight.
Twelve thousand dollars.
But wait a minute, that can't be right.
Soil conservation?
That's, uh, pretty high.
It's been twenty.
Up here, twenty-two thousand.
Twenty-two.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was reading their whole budget, sorry, county portion, county appropriation, twenty-two thousand, sorry.
Okay, that's alright.
And that's stayed the same?
Yeah, so that's the same, yeah, yeah, okay, area aging for aging, senior care is zero, so that was nothing, I guess.
Well, the cent, the north central.
Area aging for, agency for aging.
Eight, yeah. They have a, they have a request for.
What, is that north central regional planning?
Yeah, yeah, Julie Gold.
Well, no, it's not north central regional, it's area agency on aging.
Julie Gold, yeah.
Is that the, that's the one for Flint Hills?
Yeah, north central Flint Hills.
That's Flint Hills, that's, they helped give us meals for the senior center, yeah.
Where's, where's the, I think it's.
Yeah.
If you go in the.
And they pay some salary.
Okay.
Uh, I bet they just.
No, you're their spokesperson, what's their budget, Cindy, I don't know.
They must have not.
You're supposed to be the representative.
So this is the amount that we would budget, and we actually take that out of health department now, this is the amount that they have been paying from council.
So, two thousand, two hundred and fifty-nine, ninety-seven.
Put that in, it was zero last year, for us.
Well, it's gonna be zero there.
Put zero here.
Yes, and then the health department side, it's gonna be the nine sixty-one, ninety-seven, otherwise they lose their grant coming.
So that, so this area, Flint Hills goes through, go through there.
We're not, we're not taking it out of the general anymore, cuz you're in the sub- subsections of the general, so just write zero, and I'll put this with the health department, we'll get to that later.
Okay, then CASA, what is CASA?
That's the court appointed advocates, seven thousand.
Seven, seven, that's what it is.
Yep, that's what they have.
Okay, you're on that too, well, yours all over the place. Nursing home, hundred twenty thousand, nursing home.
Nursing home, now that's another dollar amount.
Yeah, this was a hundred twenty thousand last two years.
So just stick that dollar amount in there, that, that's a dollar amount that we choose.
Okay, and we can review it, of course.
Yeah, we can talk about it later, I just wanted to get the numbers on the.
Juvenile detention, five hundred, that's been that for three years, five hundred dollars.
That's a separate, they, they don't make a request.
Um, well, they do, normally he gets that out his meetings, since we don't.
I think that's the minimum. Okay, but I think that's the minimum.
Just put that in, like normal.
That they've been doing year to year.
Five hundred, yeah, yeah. Alright, abandoned cemeteries, two thousand dollars.
We left that, because that was for the bidding of the mowing, so just leave that in there, we were able to cover the bids with that last year, this current year.
Yeah.
He's a mower.
Oh.
Eleven hundred.
Okay.
LEP program, thirteen thousand, five hundred.
What is it?
L E P.
That's, uh, Sean.
Oh, sharing, sharing the, okay, just stick the same number in there, does he bring a grant, I mean, a budget request?
Thirteen-five.
Well, he said he was gonna work on it.
Okay.
That's the.
Just fill that number in.
Yeah, thirteen thousand, five hundred, alright, city of Lincoln Rec Commission, twenty-five thousand.
Same.
Okay. Liability insurance, forty-one thousand.
Do we have any numbers?
That, I don't know, I thought, I, I will work on that one.
Okay, obviously the bank, okay.
Normally what I do is I take whatever the cost is this year and times it by ten percent.
And we put the same number in. It goes up ten percent?
Well, it doesn't, but.
Went from forty to forty-one.
I don't know what it's gonna be, so.
Okay.
It went from thirty-six thousand to forty to forty-one, so, anyway, I'll put forty-one, we.
Just for now, so we can get a general.
County, the fair board, ten thousand, same thing, bro, then.
Let me look.
Fair board, we, uh, oh, I asterisked gems, sorry, it's kind of in the middle, the right hand side and.
Yes, ten thousand, it says that's, that's the same amount.
Okay. Right, courtroom security, zero.
Right.
I don't know, they were talking, maybe eventually.
Well, we were, instead of having a security guard, we were, the sheriff's office was supposed to bill us every time they provide service, and we were taking in all that, but then he only did that for the first year, and after that.
And then Judge Cuddy was here with that one guy from.
So that's coming out of the sheriff's budget, to cover the courtroom?
Yeah.
And Judge Cuddy was here, remember, with that one DEA or CIA or FEMA guy or somebody, remember about some crazy could come in here and shoot up the place, and, well, yeah, but what do we, you know, I don't know what you can do about it.
Okay, it says OCCK is.
Zero, right?
Two percent more.
Yeah.
Alright, computer contract, fifty-six thousand, is that for your, all the courthouse network?
Does that include this comtech number?
It includes that, and then it also includes the cloud, so I'll have to compute that.
So put that on there, okay, just leave the same number for now, and if they, if those have to go up, we don't really have.
Fifty-six thousand.
I think it will go up by whatever that amount is.
Fifty-six thousand, I'll put, alright, promotion.
It was a twelve percent increase, they're saying.
Yeah, it went from fifty-two to fifty-six.
I'll, I'll compute those, the ones that I normally do is commissioners, the courthouse general fund, courtroom security contractual, commodities, capital outlay, the transportation bus rescue squad, recycling center, economic development, the L E P program, recreation commission, the computer contracts and the liability insurance, and then I did human resources last year too, and those, I just haven't had a chance to sit down.
That's alright.
Okay, so I have a number for that, because it is on here.
What's that?
The, what you just said.
Promotion advertising?
No, the comtech, the computer.
Computer contract?
Okay, it's, uh, Mr. Gaiman, we add this together, it's thirty-two, six, and seventeen, nine, twenty.
But then we also have, um, seventeen, nine, twenty, we also have the website, and we have C I C, which is a keyword indexing that we have.
Do you have any numbers for that, or?
Well, we're, we'll, we'll come back.
What I normally do is pull out what I paid them before, and those, we don't normally go up in costs.
Alright.
Well, your, those two are fifty-five, twenty.
Okay.
And it was fifty-six last year.
Fifty-six, so.
So they're not a lot, those.
The website is like eighteen hundred dollars, and then the C I C one is probably around a thousand.
So add three thousand to that.
So you're still gonna be.
Fifty-eight.
Did I make it fifty?
Fifty-three, five.
Three, oh, I thought you said fifty-five, okay.
But you're, that's two thousand cheaper than last year.
It was fifty-six.
But it may not be, cuz I'm just estimating those numbers.
Yeah, we'll, we'll address them later, we, we know a lot of these aren't stoned here.
I thought we were just looking at the ones that have been submitted.
Okay. Let's just look, well, I was going down this list, I don't, I shouldn't do it, so.
No, go ahead, go.
Well, just, alright, promotion advertising, two grand, I'll just leave it two grand.
Is that what we do for courthouse general, when we advertise?
Kathy Crispin will come in and ask you, uh, we do a thousand dollars for the Chamber of Commerce, and Kathy Crispin's traveling organization that does that advertisement, so there's just two thousand dollars for you guys to work with, normally another thousand.
Just stick that same number in.
Yep.
Alright, north central regional planning, thirty-five hundred, that's been that length for three years.
There's, this is the north central regional.
It's a fourteen or twenty county operation.
Lincoln, thirty-five hundred.
Yeah, that's what it has been for three years.
I have to say, this year it was worth it, because they helped us split that grant together for the appraisal for the.
Yeah, I think they're helpful, transfer to transportation bus fund.
That's our portion of.
Twenty thousand, that's what Jerry was talking about, leave it same.
We'll leave it.
Yeah.
Now, if you add this number, it's more than twenty thousand, so you guys have to decide.
His new number is higher than.
Well, he added seven hundred and, he had, he had nineteen, nine ninety-five, plus seven hundred.
Not that much, six hundred dollars.
What, like twenty, twenty-one, twenty thousand, twenty, one hundred?
Twenty-six. Yeah, oh, twenty-six hundred, twenty-six, twenty thousand, six hundred.
Twenty thousand, six, okay, I'll just put that.
That's rounded, but that's about.
That's close enough.
Okay.
Transfer to rescue squad fund.
That's how happened though, and I just wiped it out.
Twenty-nine, three, two, two, last year.
A half a mil, whatever she calculates for the.
A half a mil is thirty thousand, five seventy-six.
What is it?
Thirty thousand, five seventy-six.
Okay.
Now, is that, I'm confused here, this rescue squad, is that fire department, and are they the same thing, they're different?
No. They're different.
They're different from EMS too?
Yes.
So who is the rescue squad, have we paid twenty, thirty thousand?
Most of, of volunteers that, um, get five dollars a run if they have a run, and they have two trucks.
So this is primarily to maintain the trucks?
Yes, and buy new equipment, so, and they try to get grants if they can.
Is it part of the fire?
No.
Where, does their, does their county general roll over into, or, um?
They have their own fund, so we transfer to their fund, and then it just stays.
But when do they know to go out versus fire department, versus the sheriff's department, versus EMS?
The sheriff's department pages though.
Sheriff's department would page them.
Yeah, any ten forty-eighth, they're required to go, um, until they're ten twenty-two.
So. They'll do above and beyond the sheriff's department or the EMS, huh?
It's if they need additional people, right?
It's basically, if you were in a car accident, and you wreck, and you need to be extracted, the rescue squad gets called to extract you.
They'll help you.
They have the equipment that.
Jaws of life, and.
Okay, that's fine, I'm not questioning, I'm just, I'm just don't know.
The fire department goes in case you have a gas leak, so like, let's say there's a wrecked car.
Yeah.
Um, we'll use my accident, for example, when we were in our accident, um, rescue squad, fire department, and ambulance was paged out, the rescue squad was there to extract us, of course, we didn't have to be extracted, cuz we were already out, um, although my child was in a car seat, so they had to cut the seat belts, you know, to get them out.
Sure.
But, um, or should've, the ambulance transports you, the fire department is there in case there's any gas leak, and they also disconnect the battery, and I think the rescue squad does that too.
Okay.
That, they're there for.
Well, good, John, you just gave me a good overview of how, what all that stuff does, see.
Now, what they actually physically do, I have no idea.
No, but you gave me the.
But are they allowed to use their funds to buy equipment for other departments, or they just have their own equipment, and where is it stored?
But you gave a good, you just gave a.
They have their own equipment, and they're in the EMS shed, and they pay like a seventy percent.
Oh, okay.
Well, thank you for the overview, cuz I never knew all the difference between all that stuff.
So then I will tell you, some of the members are one in the same, and so sometimes they have troubles, cuz like, my husband was a member of both.
Uh-huh, no, and that's great, I just didn't understand it all, that's all. Okay, that's thirty thousand, seven five seventy-six, transfer to capital improvement fund, it used to be seventy thousand, but now it's zero last two years.
We don't normally budget to transfer, we'll transfer if we have money.
The capital improvement would come from the leftover funds?
Oh, okay, that's all with this now, but that's your.
Now, back to, that's, that's the breakdown of the general.
Breakdown of the general, and that was, uh, the courthouse general, yeah, so we have that, okay, now we'll go to, uh, emergency preparedness, forty-six thousand, three hundred ninety-six. Who is that, is that EMS?
That's emergency manager, isn't it?
Oh, that's David?
Yeah.
Okay.
Why does it say, what was last year?
Well, they, especially have a reimbursement, so, so you have to add it together, so forty-six, three ninety-six, plus eighty-six, fifty-one.
So this would be the reimbursement, it would be fifty-six, two point eight minus these.
Yes, so if you did the eighty-six. Eighty-six, fifty-one.
You guys bored yet?
It's fifty-five, zero, forty-seven.
You're making him earn that badge sitting here, you're gonna make, make him earn that badge sitting there in these boring meetings, it's almost like cruel to hear the poor young guys.
He just got phoned, here, brothers.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, guys, we're so boring. Take your nap, go ahead.
It, it's a good experience for him.
Well, you understand the government a little bit, you see what we do, what we don't do.
What do you got for emergency? Nineteen, nine sixty-seven for last year.
Can you go ahead and fill in?
Emergency, uh, forty, forty-six.
Forty-six, three ninety-six.
Forty-six, three ninety-six.
So take this minus this for me, so I can give them that up.
Is that up or down?
That was, well. No, that was last year, I don't have next year, I don't have this year's yet, Lexus is looking at it.
Okay, it's forty-seven, five, seven, seven, just keep that.
Okay, next one, special reappraisal, what is that for?
Uh, that's rounded, that's at the appraisal.
Oh, reapprai, that's appraisers.
Yeah, I don't know why they call it reappraisal.
That was, last year was one ten, five oh four, it's here somewhere.
Yeah, I, it's handwritten, oh, here it is, um, one hundred and eleven thousand, seven sixty-three.
That's up about a twelve hundred. Special building.
That one I do.
Okay.
I normally just, we did the same dollar amount.
That's fine. Yeah, that was ten thousand.
He did request and approved, and I, I think he does have a break down, I'm like, I agree, okay, what was your next one?
Well, I did special building, but Don said she does that, it was ten thousand last year.
Okay.
Do the same dollar amount every year.
It was ten grand last time.
We'll just plug that in, then.
Okay.
Okay.
And then we have election, twenty-nine thousand, two, twenty-nine, that's yours, did I just put something like last year?
I think it'll be the same amount as last year.
Yeah, well, the last two years have been the same.
Cuz, yeah, I think that's what we did to keep that ebb and flow from the tax lip, so we don't have.
Now, we'll have an election this year, won't we, for some stuff, huh?
City school, so this will be a smaller election year, but I'll have enough money to transfer them to the capital improvement fund, so that way, when I do have to purchase new equipment, we already have.
And we were, and one time we were talking, possibly putting a, a vote to the public about, for the nursing home, if they would, you know, bills, I don't know if we're still gonna do that, or whatever, you know?
Oh, as a part of the election, I don't know what the timeframe is on that, we'd have to.
There's a constitutional amendment, so it'll be a countywide election, work anyway, anyways, but normally city and school, you don't get as good turnout, but with the constitutional amendment, we might.
When do we have to know, when's the deadline to get something like that on the?
I would say by September first.
So, we got a month here, basically, or two, or five, or six weeks to figure out if we're gonna do that or not.
Cuz we're gonna send ballots off.
So we gotta figure out, like, we don't have enough to do with the nursing home thing, if what we plan to do, or we're not planning to do, I know, it's tough, okay, sorry.
That's okay, um, anyways, by September twenty-something, normally we have to send out military ballots, so.
You gotta get it ready, yeah, I know, okay, alright, now, next one, recycling, thirty-three thousand, four fifty, last year.
One I do for you, but basically, it's kind of the same, we just increased for house of living.
I'll just put forty-four.
Put thirty-four, yeah.
And you, well, we'll change these probably, or tweak them, communications, a hundred sixty thousand, is that dispatcher?
Yes.
I have that somewhere here.
Um, it'd be under law enforcement or.
I know, but I thought I had, I must have put it back on, I did put it back over here.
Now, Don, we do, when we do benefits, we do benefits for everybody in home county, certain parts of the county don't do their own benefits.
In Como, last year was a hundred and sixty thousand, right?
No, so, every, every fund, every, is paid for out of the employee benefit fund, some counties, they levy the employee benefits in each of the individual funds.
I was wondering.
Communications, one fifty-four, three eighty-five, forty.
Really, it went down?
Yeah, it was a hundred and sixty last year.
Yeah, a hundred and sixty thousand last year.
Well, maybe we need to recalculate his math to make sure.
One fifty-four, three eighty-five?
One fifty-four, three eighty-five.
Fifty-five hundred dollar drop.
Which that is my spreadsheet that I gave him except for we need to factor in longevity, I never did do that for him.
You wanna leave that at one sixty then?
Each department had be doing their own longevity, I know, some of them ask, okay, uh, next.
I'll just leave it what you got there, we'll change it again, if you're gonna do longevity.
You got one, two, four, five, right?
One fifty-four, three eighty-five.
One five four, three eight five.
We'd probably change that, we have asked, forty, and all, commu, uh, H R, human resources, we have forty-two thousand, one five, well, well, that's something we'll have to think about.
Yeah, well, the contract for the, the benefits management will come out of there, and then we're gonna talk about what we wanna do as far as personnel.
And if you hire, you, uh. Employee benefits, how that'll be affected.
Oh, I see what you're saying, it, well.
And you may hire a, uh, another assistant, right, would that go into that H R thing, or under your budget?
Well, it'd go under mine, I, I guess we just need to figure out what we wanna do, what direction we wanna move in, and part of that will come out with which, which company you guys choose.
Well, let's see where we are, just keep the same number for now, yeah, I'm, I'm not trying to reduce anything at this point, I wanna get all the numbers in as reflected, then we'll look at.
Let's just keep same number for now. Forty-two, one fifty, yeah, let's just keep it for now, we can always come back, tweak it, change these, well, just give us, give us a benchmark here.
Right, we need to know where we are.
Appropriations, one million, one hundred and sixty thousand, two hundred and twenty.
That's what you just went over, over, that would be like your smaller organizations all added together, economic development hospital. That was what transferred to page seven D.
Okay, seven B, should we go through that?
Seven D, you, well, you've already done it, so flip the page and I'll show you, so that dollar amount.
That's appropriations from county general?
Yes, see appropriations here.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
So just skip that.
Well, okay, skip that.
We have a few more here.
And then we're, now I'm done on this here, I'm done for this, where would the next?
Yeah, keep going. Yeah, keep going to the next page.
Over here?
Roden Bridge, Roden Bridge.
Oh, okay.
So.
Where are you at here?
Okay, so did you, you did.
Yes.
Your guys' clerk treasurer.
Yeah, we did treasurer, okay.
Oh, yeah, you did, okay, so you've done everything there, it's just breaking it down further.
Yeah.
And then you'll be ready for Roden Bridge next.
Over here? Okay.
You ready for Roden Bridge?
So we have no debt, now we're ready for Roden Bridge.
Yeah, three eighty-one, one hundred last year.
Page nine. Now Roden Bridge was uh two hundred forty, two million, four hundred and forty-one thousand, one hundred dollars last year.
Same.
Yeah.
Same now, two four four one, one hundred.
Okay, and then uh we keep going uh.
Do you have one under funds twelve, which would still be under the highway department, but it's a separate? But, but this is wrong. But that's wrong, because he has four hundred thousand in there, and we have to cap it at two mils, I believe, if I, if my memory serves me correct. Go back to economic development and find out what that dollar amount was, cause that's exactly two mils.
Economic development was uh.
Well, I got a different number for Roden Bridge for last year.
What did you have last year?
Two million, three eighty-one, one hundred.
Maybe that was the actual, that's why, you're, you're looking at the actual, I'm looking at the budget from last year, which was two, same.
So you got.
What was the two mils?
Two, two four four, one hundred.
Two, that's what I have?
Yeah, alright.
That was requested last year, and it, but you're looking at, you're looking at the actual.
I'm looking at the real number, this is the only one that's been deviant of what we've had.
Okay, so what was the?
Economic development was.
Last year, it started out at two million, three eighty-one, one hundred.
Three eighty-one, okay, so maybe a portion of that was put somewhere else, cause they, they have several funds, what was the two mil for economic development? One hundred.
One twenty-two, three oh four.
Okay, so do you have one called highway department fund twelve after your Roden Bridge?
Special bridge.
I got a funding.
And what's the number from last year on the special bridge?
Special bridge was uh. Well, they had a hundred and fif-.
That's right, one fifteen, eight oh three?
Bridge construction, oh, a hundred eighty-seven thousand.
No.
Total expenditures or?
The, which, did you have, did you say one fifteen, eight oh three, do you see that number on there?
Yeah.
That's the one you need to plug in.
That's current, that's current estimate for twenty, two thousand eighteen.
Okay, so plug in beside that, one twenty-two, three oh four, cause that is equal to exactly two mil.
But, but for two nineteen, I had one eighty-seven there, that's just. Bridge construction.
That's probably a rollover, there's probably money left in there, is what I'm assuming, you can't.
One twenty-two.
We can't tax for more than two mil, but I think if there's a rollover.
For special bridge, bridge construction, one twenty-two then?
Yeah.
Right, you can only tax a maximum mil levy, he said of two mils.
Right, so, so if it was a hundred and eighty-seven last year, does that mean that was the leftover rollover from the year before?
Um, yes, cause the difference is.
He put in a request of three hundred, but we only did one fifteen, eight oh three, which was two mil for that year, then he has three hundred again, but it ended up being one eighty-seven, which would have been the two mil plus whatever was left, so. So just plug in one twenty-two, three oh four.
Okay.
And that's special bridge?
Yeah, this is not a special bridge.
Is there, how can we expend the funds?
Just for bridges, so.
Not for roads?
No, a lot of times those bigger bridge projects is what ends up getting funded, so like they just did that golden rad.
Right, yeah.
Broad bridge.
Yeah.
So when would you use special bridge funds versus?
That's what she's saying.
Regular bridge funds.
Those bigger projects, so that golden rod bridge.
You would just use regular bridge fund.
Right.
But if you had a big deal, then you'd come here.
Well, if you have a culvert, it's the Roden Bridge Fund, so just the highway department fund, the road fund.
Okay.
Um if you have a big project that's an actual bridge, then it.
That's fund twelve.
Okay.
So technically, they could have taken when they did the, um this dump road bridge, they could have taken that repair out of there. Um and on them, a lot of times those bigger projects, they have the engineers.
What do you have left in there right now?
So you have engineers for.
Fund twelve.
Acquisition.
What's left in there?
And then the bridge itself.
Okay.
Got something screwed up here, I'm not backing here, what I have is a different number, I have fund eleven.
That's the main, that's the main Roden Bridge, then there's fund twelve.
Yeah, I don't have.
It should come after that, no, keep going, it, it'll be separately calculated. Is fund twelve listed right after fund eleven?
Yeah, it's just fund the eleven is about four or five pages if you're looking at.
Oh, okay.
So keep going till you get to fund twelve, okay, Randy, what do you have next?
Uh noxious weed.
Noxious weed, twenty.
It was seventy-seven thousand.
Twenty-twenty budget request, ninety-five thousand.
It was seventy-nine thousand, seventy-seven, that's ninety-five?
Yes.
He's gone up quite a bit there.
I do have fund twelve, one eighty-seven, seven.
I wonder, I guess it's for chemicals.
But what's left in it as of, do you have today's date?
Ending fund balance.
Yeah.
Randy, that's just what he does, you'll have to go.
One eighty-six, two ninety, eighty-one.
That's just what he still has left.
Really?
Supposedly.
As of.
All the time?
Yeah.
That's right.
Yeah.
So we haven't used any funds out of the bridge, special bridge fund yet, is what this is saying.
Your special bridge, got it.
That's it.
That's a hundred eighty-six, one seventy, twenty-seven left.
That's it.
We've spent year-to-date. That's what we've spent.
Oh, remaining here.
You guys don't even get to eat lunch?
This is, this is special bridge down here.
You wouldn't have to stay for the whole meeting, do you?
Zero.
Yeah.
Use year-to-date, so we don't.
Well, that's fine, I don't care, we're pretty boring here going over budgets.
Here's what they use month-to-date, here's what they've used year-to-date.
Now, 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 they'll never run for public office, because they don't wanna do this stuff, right guys?
Yes, yes, because we budgeted out in November, I think.
And then we would have paid for the other bridge last year as well.
Did any that's obligated to not, but not pay?
I, that's a question you have to ask that department, because I don't know where they're at with their bridge projects, and what bridges they're working on, I used to know that, because they used to be me to do that.
Well, we're only halfway through the year, so if we have another bridge project go through, I mean, that's what that money is for, but.
Well, there may be some contracts already, if they have some bridges pending.
We haven't talked about any. There's nothing on this project list that says any bridges, I mean, that.
I guess temporaries.
It seemed like there was another bridge that we were in the process of doing.
Okay.
Law enforcement, where this is.
Law enforcement, didn't we do that?
Well, but I got a special.
Oh, that's a vehicle fund, so it's gonna be with that, from the third page.
Law enforcement vehicle fund, sixty-five thousand.
Yeah, that's, that's his new vehicle.
I have.
That was last year, sixty-five thousand.
It's sixty-five, yeah, it's sixty-five.
He implemented his buy a new car every year program, didn't he?
And then county health.
Yeah.
County health, uh two hundred forty thousand, forty-seven dollars.
Okay, this year I have two hundred and twelve, four hundred and sixty-six.
Wonder why they're, why thirty grand left?
She had some additional grants, I believe.
That's good.
But expired. It's less or it's more?
Less.
This last one, Lexus just read, I had two forty oh forty-seven for uh twenty nineteen, and it's two twelve, four, six, six.
Okay.
So it's not thirty, twenty-eight thousand.
The thing is, is you can't reduce, you can't reduce what. And I, and I don't remember if it's the budget or the ad valorem tax dollar, but you can't reduce something, because if you reduce something, then she loses all of her state grant funds dollar for dollar. So that's why we moved that senior care act fund to come take out of that, to help with that.
So we should, what you're saying is, it says two forty last year, we should make at least that this year?
I, yes, I just can't remember if it's the budget or if it's the tax dollars.
Lexus just read two twelve, and that was two forty, so should we make it two forty again or something?
Well, we'll have to see how it affects the tax dollars, because if the tax dollars or the, either or, one or the other. So it could be that she has less carryover, and if she has less carryover, then it will push this number to be the same. But if she has more carryover, then it will reduce this number, but we can't reduce this number, I believe.
Okay.
Because if we reduce that number, then they lose, she loses all that grant funding that she said she was.
So uh how do we know what to do there then, how do you put?
Um that's where that one, you'll probably just have to rely on the auditor to do for you. And just say, ha- have her submit the budget as is, and then the auditor will tell you when he comes to review the budget. Whether or not she's gonna lose her, her grants, and then if she loses her grants, then you may choose to add something else to her fund.
Put a star next to that, because that's.
Yeah, I'll put auditor review, auditor review, and I'll put two twelve as a request, but we need, I'll put a question mark, because we know that's not gonna be right. Okay.
And it's a, a potential that the reduction of the grant will balance out with the required tax dollars, just depending on how she did last year. And he'll know how she did last year, because he's already done.
That's kind of a hard thing to budget, I don't know.
It is, that's why she gives you so much more information than what the others do, I mean, she like really details all of her income.
Yeah.
So then that way.
That's good.
Yeah.
Okay, well, we'll move on, well, Lexus ain't here, we'll wait for a while, she wants to. That's alright.
Where'd you leave off?
Well, we just went to county health, and it was last, you just read two twelve, four, four, six, but Dawn informed us that. That number really can't be that, because we can't be less at the bottom line down there, or we'll lose grant funding. So she, Dawn stated, we should probably have the auditor review this.
So he'll plug in all the information, but you can't.
So wait a minute, I missed something here though, because she has, oh, this is, okay, I'm sorry, change that to two two seven, four, three, eight. I was reading that.
So that's her total revenue that she's estimating?
Well, she broke it down, that's.
That's still twelve thousand.
Two two seven?
That is still less, you're right.
So we need to make sure the auditor will tell us.
Four, three, eight, is what I actually have, I'm sorry.
Well, that's okay, but uh it's still less, and like Dawn's saying is, we don't wanna go. So that we're under too low, or we'll lose our grant funding, that, so, how do you figure out what to put in it?
So we haven't added yet, she didn't add that to that yet, did she?
No, he hasn't added that.
So add, add two thousand, three hundred.
That'll just nine sixty-one, ninety-seven, because that one that counts on aging.
Oh, I'm sorry, nine hundred and sixty-two.
A hundred and sixty-two dollars.
Uh-huh, for the health department add, because that goes sweet.
Gets us up to two twenty.
That's two twenty-eight.
Okay, so just plug in two twenty-eight.
So basically, I think what they can do is, they can kind of adjust what the revenues are, so if she has a higher patient fees, and let's say she's saying. Ten thousand dollars and we need to get five thousand, they may say, let's reduce it to five thousand, so that way it evens it out. So that's the one where the auditors will kind of help you, and then you may, and he may come back and just say, I can't, you're gonna lose the grant funding, and then you guys decide, is it worth the. Losing the grant funding or not.
Okay.
So if we give more budget, then we keep the grant funding?
Yeah, but it depends on what the difference is, and the other thing is, you can always use that to rollover into her capital outlay, if we know there's gonna be a big purchase next year. We could still leave, do you know what I'm saying, we could budget into her, since we know what her expenses are gonna be, we could. Make up for the difference by knowing that that's gonna roll into capital outlay, so.
And she pays for all of her building expenses, so I mean, you can find some things that.
Okay.
Just to adjust, but eventually, they will figure that out.
Well, it's a learning process, I didn't know any of this to begin with, I just, if you pay attention, it comes at a, at a point.
Next, uh fund page for fund with the ambulance, I'm sorry.
Okay, we don't have that, so just plug in the same number for right now.
Four thirty-seven, four hundred thirty-seven last year. Yeah, we got a, Derek's, well, he's new and.
Well, we need to discuss with him, I think, the breakdown of last year's budget, just look at where we are.
Now, point benefits, uh.
Just leave that the same for now until we get.
One, sit, one million, six hundred ninety-four thousand, hundred ninety, the same? For nine.
Yeah, leave it the same for now.
Okay.
We don't wanna gouge ourselves by.
I thought last year we approved one point one. Well, one point one is the health insurance.
Oh.
One point one.
Or one point three, yeah, one point one was.
So what's the extra half a mil?
Where's the other?
Um it's your social security, Medicare taxes, capers.
Withholding.
All the stuff, yeah.
That's why.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
My memory is bad, but not that bad, okay.
That was benefits, that's all benefits, not just health.
Yes, yes.
We, when you think benefits, you think health insurance, because that's the biggest.
I know when we break it down with the auditor, it would say.
I wonder if this hub or whoever we pick can help us with other stuff, all of the benefits, besides, they have medical insurance too. There's generally not.
It's not like they do payroll withholding.
Well, you know, also, social security, you gotta pay what you gotta pay, Medicare, you gotta pay what you gotta pay, that, that ain't gonna help.
What I, what they, I think them and pick both said, and, and if not hub, then at least pick.
Yeah.
Um they actually sit down and, like, they will help you, and they'll say, look, you have a conceco health insurance. That's like a cancer policy, you have two members taking it. We suggest that you not.
Not offer it?
Offer that anymore.
Right.
Yeah, because you probably have to pay a minimum fee, regardless of how many people are on the plan, so it doesn't justify the.
Well, we offer other cancer policies, so you know, instead of having three different cancer policies, basically what's happened in the past.
You can make it more efficient.
Has come before the board, the commissioners have said, yeah, go ahead and offer that service to our employees, and some of them will take it and some of them won't, but. What people don't realize is how much time it takes to manage those benefits, and to check what their bene- to make sure their withholding is correct, and then their bill, and then we're processing everything. To where they basically had said, and especially pick, we say, if you don't have five members on it, it's not worth adding the company. Um and so those are.
Those are some of the questions we can ask on Thursday.
That'd be good, good asset.
Okay.
Okay, nine one one, two hundred three thousand, eight hundred fifty-two.
Um, okay, that is just an automatic based upon what they have left in their revenue, and we only receive fifty thousand dollars a year, so.
So that's what's left over, and then you add a fifty thousand?
I see you have fifty thousand.
Is that come out of where?
Equipment.
Is that a separate mil, or a separate check levy?
No, that is a, a non-normality fund, it comes from the state of Kansas, so the twenty-five cents that you pay on your telephone, the state disperses that. Smaller counties get an automatic fifty thousand, and the bigger counties, I don't know how they disperse it.
Okay, so we should put fifty thousand in there or?
Um, well, we're only going to have a fifty thousand dollar income, and then they budget based upon what our expenditures are. Um they just look and see what it was that we spent, um out of the twenty eighteen, so basically what they're gonna do.
You have that two hundred thousand, what, that two.
Right, so what, basically what they're gonna do is, they're gonna say, okay, you had a hundred and ten thousand dollars left over, and it's, or actually. Hundred fifty-three thousand, then they're gonna take what our current year expenditures are at six months, they're gonna times it by two. And they're gonna come up with our, with our estimated.
What was last year's expense?
Last year we had, or two years ago, it was thirty-three thousand, eight hundred and thirty-three dollars.
Okay.
So they're gonna figure that out, and then they're gonna do, do their calculations, they're gonna add in the fifty thousand dollars we receive, and then they're going to budget a hundred percent.[1677.04] Of whatever we have in case we would have a major catastrophe and we would need the money. Because if you don't have it budgeted, then you can't spend it. So they budget a hundred percent remaining.
But if it's budgeted, that doesn't mean it's being levied.
It's, nothing's being levied. Absolutely none, cause this is a fund without a levy.
Oh, so what do you do?
It's just showing the cash rollover plus what the income is going to be.
So that we don't have to levy nothing for that?
No, but she's saying you, but in the budget you work in, if we're not levying that portion of the budget, but you work in the total number. So add fifty thousand to that rollover and that'll be, is it fifty thousand flat?
Yes, fifty thousand. That, it could be, but you're gonna have some expenditures, so it just depends on what your expenditures were, but.
We don't know.
You'll, no, they'll do that for you.
Should this put a question mark?
Yeah. That's a fund that you just won't.
Okay.
Bill.
Well, what did they buy? They bought something out of the nine-one-one fund this year?
Yeah, and the auditors does, does this, so basically what they'll do is they'll fill in the twenty eighteen column. Then they'll fill in the twenty nineteen.
They have some equipment.
Where it was coming from.
Cause they got special equipment. They got special hardware just for nine-one-one stuff, which.
In the communications thing, yeah.
They got special communication.
Cause I remember asking Dustin where that was coming out of the budget.
Then I got nine-one-one, I'm going, oh, what's the difference? If I call in, I'm, if I just call in.
Depends on which phone line you call.
Yeah, why, does that, does that just have to be itemized separately because it's not levied, because we are levying for communications, it can't just be part of the communications budget.
And the nine-one-one has certain stipulations. And so it's for the states.
I know Dustin, I know Dustin looked into that, cause he did reply, respond that that's where he took the funds from for that last purchase, whatever it was.
Okay, well, that's confusing. I have no idea what we're doing here.
But you're just fine.
Okay, refuse, I can figure that out.
Okay, county landfill.
Three hundred and thirty thousand, nine hundred and seventy-five.
That was last year.
Boy, that went up fifty thousand dollars.
This year's three hundred and forty thousand, six hundred. So does this mean that they edited and took out all your line items? Or did you just leave that blank for them to fill in?
So they could fill in if they wanted to.
Yeah, it would be nice to see like what we're spending for fuel, what we're spending.
Do we have any difficulties in separating?
Oh, I see what you did, Dawn, insert items you would like to break down.
Noxious weed and these guys being separate departments now, is there an impact on funding for that?
No, and the reason why we decided that is because there was no beneficial impact on funding for combining. So, they have to be budgeted separately.
So three forty-six hundred.
This is a user-based fund. So it is only gonna be gen- revenue is only gonna be generated in, in user fees. And we bill on the tax roll for homes in the country, we bill, um, on the city bills for res- city residents. And then we build businesses. And then there are CD pits that is charged for, that Hannah does the billing for. And then they collect for tires, um, and that they collect out there. Yes, so all of that is user fee. Again, it will zero out. If the budget is more than what they have cash for, then that's when the auditor tells you it's time to increase your user fees. But most of the time, and if you look here, reserve for future fund, that's forty-two thousand, zero twenty-five. That's what you would use to save up to buy your walking bottom trailer, your, uh, backhoe. Um, those things are included in the capital improvement fund to be paid for, but they're not transferring any money into the capital improvement fund.
We're doing this for a while, if you guys. Thank you guys for coming in. No, I appreciate, appreciate some audits.
Young guys through torture, unless they're, that's, goes with the budget.
Will we have a special session on weed generator blades?
On what?
Weed generator blades, would that be a special charge for those?
For what? Yeah, thank you.
They're not gonna bring it to us here, I think.
For a while they were going to.
Well, we, they're gonna repower next year, we've heard that they were going to, uh, get rid of them themselves, cut them up and haul them off, I heard. I don't think hauling does.
I, yeah, we don't have the right of refusal.
Well, yeah, I think we should have that refusal pretty big letters.
Well, we, and also, we, I think we've talked about, some people are worried they're just gonna kick them, some farmers pasture up there, make them, or eyesore. And I think they said, no, we, we talked to this Alexis, right, that they were gonna supposedly cut them up and then haul them off. Now, I don't know all the details of that.
Okay, we only have a couple more here.
Okay, here we go, here we go. All right, ambulance, capital outlay.
Okay, we can't do that yet, just plug in the same number.
Oh, I think he might actually be done, cause this will just be the capital outlay fund.
Well, I still have, oh, well, I still have appraiser office.
Oh, we did that when you were stepped.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, so then that goes over here, we just did noxious weed.
Cause I think all the rest of the funds are capital outlays.
What did I do for?
So the other two budgets I have are the Lincoln and Sylvan Senior Center, which is, comes out of the line item if we do that.
County appraiser. It was one ten, five oh four.
No, wait.
I don't think they did a twenty twenty, but in, in the council.
Oh, that's last year though, the new one's one eleven, seven sixty-three. Did you write that in, Randy?
Yeah, yeah, somewhere here, I can find out where I was here and all this stuff.
It might've been on seven B.
Is that where it is?
Appraiser, reappraisal.
Reappraisal, yeah. Seven A or B?
I think seven B. Special reappraisal.
Oh, there it stuck, yeah.
One eleven, seven sixty-three.
Yeah, yeah, I there it is, okay.
So Derek was gonna maybe try to come today, I'm assuming, did he call or?
Um, well, he texted me and said that he wasn't.
So Dawn, these are all yours, these are all the general?
And Cindy said she felt like the, she thought the council on aging brought a twenty twenty, so I'll look some more. Through my stuff upstairs, I, my problem is I have about ten different folders. So I will look and make sure I didn't accidentally, I will call Lincoln Senior Center. And get theirs and then I'll look for that OCTK, but I looked in the minutes and it says.
He wants that back, which is what we wrote on.
I like a copy though, cause I wanna.
Why don't you just keep it?
Yeah, can I keep this?
Yeah, you have it.
Cause I'm gonna call in, well, I mean, I'll be there first, but I'm gonna call in.
We need to approve those bills and all that crap, no, we don't start off.
What bills?
I think you guys did that.
We did divestment, we gotta prove. Sign off the, but also, the bills, did you sign off the bills for nursing home and all that?
I didn't sign them.
No, we had them laying here somewhere.
I did, I did.
I gave you all those back, right?
Yeah, yeah, we took them back, we got paper, paper and paper.
Where did the bills go? Did I give you the bills, Dawn?
Are they in part of your pile here, Alexis?
Here they are, got them here, okay. Any questions about any of this? I mean, I'm really not satisfied that Street Plumbing installed a multi-thousand dollar unit and then wouldn't come back and adjust the floats.
Yeah, for free.
Yeah, that is really disappointing, I think maybe.
Nickel and diamond.
Yeah, it's, yeah, and, and that, and I've seen that trend here for a while. I'm not saying that they don't provide good service, but that seems a little extraordinary.
It's true, the nursing home.
Street, Street Plumbing put in like a seven thousand dollar.
I went into that, this is beside the same outfit, I put a brand new, uh, heating, air conditioning unit in the funeral home for some number. And they didn't have the fan balanced right and they had various, they had to come back and cost another seven hundred damn dollars to fix that and I didn't think that was right. He said it was all labor and, you know, not part of that guarantee, well, I'm probably gonna find me another plumbing company.
Well, that's what, I mean, I'm almost, I'm interested to see what they'd say, do you give me permission to contact them and say? You know, we kind of find this to be unacceptable, we spend thousands of dollars there.
I think that sounds like a, a warranty problem to me.
Well, they, they put in these.
Well, it was an installation thing.
There's water softener, their water, uh, yeah, water softener, these special heads for these cleaners and they're, yeah, seven thousand bucks. And that, and I kinda agree, they, they should adjust them, but they're making work that.
I mean, I just think if we're not gonna get certain service calls to come back after they've just done a project, then why would we continue to use them? We would wanna find someone who would come back and say, oh, we'll adjust those floats, we just installed it. You know, it's just a matter of doing business and I'm not, I'm not saying I don't wanna ever use them again, but that seems like.
That could be a little more complicated.
Explain some detail our concern.
Do you give me permission to call them?
Yeah.
Okay, if you guys give me permission to call them, I will call them.
Call them.
And then this stuff from Hayworth, coil cleaner, capacitor.
Get all of the.
Rubber washer, rebuild a toilet, I don't.
That was some special, they probably have.
There is a difference between commercial toilet and regular toilet.
And they have those for those nursing homes.
Yeah.
They probably totally dismantled it and there's probably inside guts and things compared to the ones we got.
The regular toilet I could fix, if the commercial guy to get somebody.
Yeah, they're, they're more complicated.
Okay, and then this is the air compressor to blow out the line for, um, condensation drain on the east water cooler. Blah, 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 three, three compartment sink, a hundred and sixteen oh three, are we okay with that? That's through street. And then, um, the doorknob from Lincoln Park Manor is, okay. It doesn't say they installed, it just says they bought it there, so that's fine, I will sign all those. I'm gonna call on this one and keep it for myself for now.
Yeah, I see a thing.
But that just doesn't seem right, you gotta do a piece of equipment, you gotta adjust it for the function.
We do need to do an executive session.
Well, call, the guy himself will call.
So, we need to do an executive session and actually, first, before we do that, I would like to call an executive session. Um, about this highway department restructure. Oh, is that?
Tell him I gave you that number, yeah. And just say.
Yeah, I will, I will.
And the bee dies to, uh.
I'll handle it.
Help us out.
Um, I would like five minutes to talk about this restructure thing, because that was supposed to be on the agenda today. And I understand why it got waylaid, but I still wanna address it. And then we need to go in for finalizing the evaluations and talking about what we did with the raises and I know we all got an email, so we need to discuss that. Um, so I move to enter into executive session for. Um, for ten minutes, for the purpose of discussing the highway department restructure organizational chart. Pursuant to KSA seventy-five, forty-three, nineteen, two B, number one, to discuss personnel matters of non-elected personnel.
To reconvene?
Oh, to reconvene in the meeting room of the court, the courthouse, commission meeting room of the courthouse, with just the board of commissioners.
I second, sorry.
That's okay.
Yeah, and those in favor vote aye.
Aye.
Aye, and motion carries.
Goes past one thirty, the counter, county clerk buys lunch.
Uh-oh.
Well, you better increase nothing.
Um, question, have we had any applications yet for, for our position that we, no, none, okay. Okay, so we need to do these minutes, David, would you like to speak to us?
Sure. Back from June seventeenth to the twenty-first when I attended the training down in, um, College Station, Texas. This was the, the cover sheet shows the amount of incurred food expenses on the right that I charged on the county credit card. One hundred and eighty-eight dollars and fifty-five cents. Um, the communication that I've had with Texas, with, with TEACs, the training program down in Texas. On the third page, Chris Murphy had corresponded with me on June twenty-fourth. I'm processing the reimbursement paperwork from the EIM UC class last week. Please copy and paste the verbiage below into the email and send back to me. I certified that the expense amount of one eighty-six forty for the EIM UC class for the TEACs business purposes, true, correct. Now previously reimbursed, will not be reimbursed by another entity or reimbursement is being claimed for the purchase of alcoholic beverages, gratuity or tips. With that. Uh, again, the, the front, the cover page shows the listed information that there was, that was reimbursed by. The TEACs program minus two dollars and fifteen cents, which was mistakenly, um, charged on the second page. You'll see I have highlighted in orange, the gratuity. I paid the gratuity this morning to Hannah for the two dollars and fifteen cents. The other one eighty-six forty is going to be reimbursed by. The TEACs training program or through the Department of Homeland Security. And Dawn had previously submitted information to me that showed me that I, I needed to pay for the forty-six. Now it's forty, um, because I went over the county resolution for the meal policy. But again, if the meals being, if the meal and the gratuity, excuse me, if the, if the meals, the luggage and the long-term parking are being reimbursed by. The Department of Homeland Security, I'm trying to find out why I as an employee or, or a, a subject to that class. That went, attended that training, have to reimburse the county also once they're, they're being reimbursed in totality. I, I don't understand that discrepancy.
Because our pay resolution says we'll pay six, eight and ten dollars per meal and that's all of the amount that was to be charged to the credit card. And when you ask for permission to charge that, I pointed that out and not a single thing was said.
As far as being reimbursed?
Our policy says that we will pay six, eight and ten dollars for meals. You exceeded the six, eight and ten dollars. If you want something more than that, then the board commissioners needs to approve that. Not I, not you, not anybody else but the board of county commissioners. They wanna change where our food reimbursement policy is, then that's up to them to change.
And I, I understand that, but, uh, again, when I attended training out in Pueblo, the county made money on my meals out there also. And, and I wasn't.
Why are you submitting for more money than what, what you're being reimbursed for?
When?
Why are you not, why are you submitting to the state more money than the six, eight and ten dollars?
That's what the lady, this is what the, this is what the training program down there has for their per diem. So.
So I think the issue is, I mean, are, are they only reimbursing from entity to entity or would they reimburse you personally?
In the past, I, I've been reimbursed personally and then I just signed the check over the, to the county, is how that had happened in the past.
So what's the benefit of using the card?
Just saves me from having to put it on my personal expense.
Cause I think is what he, I think what he's saying, Dawn, is the total amount is being reimbursed to us. But you're asking him to pay the difference between the nine and the whatever.
Six, eight and ten, because that's all our county is saying.
Right, yeah, we can't go against the handbook policy, I mean, that's, w- we can't just make exceptions for people. If we have it written down as a policy, it needs to stay that way.
Okay, so then once the, once the TEACs check comes in then, then, then I get to cut my forty-four whatever out of that?
No, I think you should give them their money back is what should happen. I mean, why would we, why would we wanna try to make money on a tax-funded program?
I'm not trying to make money, but that's their per diem rate, is, is far and above Lincoln County's. Is far and above the federal program's meal reimbursement policy was far and above.
Right, and this is why everyone's taxes are so high all the time, because we're constantly funding things like this.
Oh, you're saying that, uh, the federal government's refunding us more than what you're getting, huh?
Ultimately, they will, and, and again, the receipts that I submitted for the training, um.
So why didn't you submit that you only received ten dollars for the meals? And then they would've only paid the ten dollars.
I didn't know that was an issue, again, the, the per diem rate for the federal program, I thought covered all that, so.
What he's saying is the Department of Homeland Security is reimbursing the amount of one eighty-six forty.
Right.
And that covers the total of the meals.
Every, everything, uh.
So then ultimately, the county doesn't have to pay for the meal, regardless of what rate we're paying.
Correct, correct.
But what, but what Dawn's saying is you exceeded the amount on the card, so now we're paying that and potential interest by the time we get this money. For a meal that was greater than what the, she's, so really, what we need to do is just not use the card. That way, if you pay for your meals when you're gone, then you get reimbursed and then we don't, you know, you just submit your. Cause that's what you're doing to them, right? You're submitting the exact dollar amount, which is up to a certain amount for their per diem. So then we don't need to, we don't need to carry that charge as a county then, is what basically, because that means we could do that for anyone and then. Really, then you're asking her to do the accounting to make sure that the full amount gets paid within that month for that cycle for your department. Then she'd have to do that for every department that wants to charge like that.
Okay.
I mean, it is an accounting issue.
Okay.
For me.
Okay, well, and again, if, if that's the.
So what we're establishing is that you don't owe. The county, because the county is getting reimbursed, that's what we're establishing, correct?
That's what he's trying to say.
That's what I was asking, yes.
And our county policy says that we will only pay six dollars, eight dollars and ten dollars. If it needs to be something different, then you guys need to make a motion that says that.
But, but this says that these are his meal amounts and he's getting refunded, he's getting paid this total amount, or we're getting paid this total amount for all the meals.
That's what he's claiming.
Yeah, yeah, when do we, when do we get that?
Six to eight weeks from the time she submitted the information.
Right, so ultimately, we end up paying interest on it, if, because if we weren't taking, you know, it really, it needs to come out of his budget, Dawn, and be paid on time. And then be reimbursed when we get this money. So in the future, to avoid that, we just don't do the card thing.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's probably appropriate. I see what you're saying. I was under the assumption, when I knew that people were gonna pay back for meals, I didn't know that this, now, is this being reimbursed for Michael's meals as well?
It was supposed to be, yes, he, he, he had the same document that I got presented when we got back, he got the same.
He already paid though, he paid the county, so now when we get that money, we owe Michael, is that?
Technically, no, unless you guys authorize it or approve it. Technically, our policy is six dollars, eight dollars and ten dollars.
Right.
So that's up to you guys to make a motion.
No, I'm not changing the handbook at this time. No, I'm not changing the handbook at this time, because we already have it set in the in the future to go through the handbook. These are some of the things we can address, but I'm not changing it now, if you guys want to, you can, but.
Okay, so then if you'd like to, then go ahead and deduct that forty-six forty from my July paycheck, please. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are you, you're still keeping track of everyone's accrued leave time and then what their leave is, right? And did everyone understand the conversation with the bus driver about how to fill out the slip if you're not here for lunch? Okay, and we can't just be letting everybody go.
Do the hours are from eight to five, and you get an hour for lunch, you can keep your hour for lunch whenever you want to take it. Except you have to answer the phones from eight to five.
And you have to clock in and out on time. Okay, good, I just wanna, I know that I kind of answered him, but I knew what he was talking about ahead of time. But we can't just be saying anyone can just not skip their lunch and leave early, I would do that every day if it could be me. Who doesn't wanna leave early?
Well, and he's, the hours, he might get a call at four-thirty, somebody wanted to. If he took off at four cuz he didn't take lunch, somebody at four-thirty, they will call him, wanted to have a ride to downtown, well, so he's gotta be here. According to them hours, right? Well, then you gotta be here, so take your lunch or or whatever.
Right, there's no point in not being here from four to five, you might have one trip downtown.
I don't see how hard it is to clock in, clock out.
Because before the time clock, many people were able to manage their own time.
Do what they wanted to do.
There's a lot of going on.
Well, we'll get, we're, right, we'll get her set up, organized for.
Okay, these go to Dawn, and then we need to talk about, so so what? Yeah, I think we just need to go into executive session for it, that way we can use specific examples of how the valuations. With the dollar amount are working out, so I move to recess into executive session. For, I think we can do it in fifteen, or do we need more?
Whatever you say, I don't know.
I'll say, I'll say for twenty, we're always five minutes short.
Short, yeah.
For twenty minutes, for the purpose of discussing employee evaluations and pay raises associated. Justification pursuant to KSA seventy-five forty-three nineteen two B, number one, personnel matters of non-elected personnel. With acting HR clerk and county commission. To reconvene in the basement meeting room. It's been moved and seconded, is there any further discussion? If not, those in favor vote aye. Motion carries. Were were you, um, oh, so we need to do a separate session.
Executive session for him.
Okay, I move to recess into executive session, that's okay, we couldn't have done it anyhow, we're doing evaluations. Well, no, uh for five minutes, for the purpose of discussing Family Medical Leave Act. Pursuant to KSA seventy-five forty-three nineteen two B, number one. To discuss personnel matters of non-elected personnel, to reconvene in the meeting room of the courthouse. The commissioners with just the commission and the clerk as acting HR. Moved and seconded for a five-minute executive session for FMLA, are there any further questions? If not, those in favor vote aye. And motion carries.
Were we on executive?
Well, we're out now.
With the door open?
We, I mean, we, it, when the time expires, it expires, but. No, we don't have to use any names, we can just say that we're not going to. Change anything about the handbook policy right now, we'll deal with that when it comes.
To the handbook policy this time.
What else?
So, was there something else on Thursday besides health insurance, I can't even remember why.
No, that's why we scheduled it, that's why.
Health insurance, and then we'll.
And then we'll look at these, the evaluation pay increases again.
Okay, and the two evaluations that you guys completed last. Week, do you want to meet with those employees and go over their evaluation?
Yes, we should, I believe that would be proper.
And is Thursday, I'm paying with that as well?
It's fine with me, anytime you pick, it's fine with me. One of these days, we need to spend the day on a nursing home.
Yeah, we're gonna, you see what, we will.
No, I'm sorry, I'm saying Thursday.
Well, when we get, we're gonna go through healthcare, pick a healthcare deal, we're gonna go through uh.
And my main concern is we get, we have to get the budget organized.
But you're right, we do, and I think that's.
How do you, how would you like to do that, though, I mean, I think we could, we should call a special meeting for it, and then are we gonna invite in the public and make it an announcement, I mean, obviously, it's open.
I think we need a special meeting, we need some closed session to decide. Some of the options that we have. Because we don't wanna discuss all these options in open session, that'll give away our bargaining position, if we have a bargaining position at all. I would like to.
We can do, I think so to executive session.
Can we, can we put that to like the first week in August, give us a couple of weeks?
That'd be fine, yeah, couple of weeks off, but you're right, Jill, I wanna address that too.
And I would like to suggest, could we do like a, an afternoon session, because we could come for a regular meeting, make Dawn hold the. For the rest of the day, I mean, and do like an afternoon on just that.
My time is yours.
Yeah, me too.
Makes no difference to me.
Next week, I'm gonna be gone.
Me too, so let's do, I was, I was suggesting the first week in August.
Next week, we, I can't do a Thursday or a.
That's fine.
Money, money I'll be.
I'm gonna be gone, so I don't wanna do anything extra unless we have to.
Proxies, I'll take care of it.
Just fill whatever you wanna hear. You'll you'll change the calendar.
The afternoon session, please leave completely open, and we'll be here for a couple hours anyway, on that, just that topic. Any further business to come before the board?
And the subject matter was nursing.
Nursing home. And I will try to announce whatever we can in public session, but really, we need to do a debriefing. Okay, if there is no further business to come before the board, I will adjourn until Thursday, which is the eighteenth at ten AM.